I changed it. Okay, we ready? Okay. Will the Housing and Land Use Committee meeting of January 24th, 2024 come to order? It is now 9:01 a.m. I am Tasha Kama, Chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee. This online meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Members, when your name is called, if you are not with me in the council chamber, please identify by name who, if anyone, is in your workspace with you today. And minors do not need to be identified. Members, do we have any questions before I begin?
Closer, go closer.
Okay. Let me move all this other gear in front of me. How about now? Members, how about now, everyone? Especially you, Mr. Cook. Okay.
Better, better.
Okay. So. I want to say good morning. Aloha, kakahiaka and buongiorno to our Chair of, the Vice Chair of today's meeting, Mr. Tom Cook.
Aloha, kakahiaka and buongiorno.
Okay. And we're going to go to our Council Chair, Alice Lee. Aloha, kakahiaka and buongiorno.
Buongiorno. Thank you, Madam Chair. I did switch it because I thought, you know, the members might have a hard time seeing it. So it's still Italian, ciao. They should know that because it's the first half of ciao fun, right?
Okay. Good morning and ciao. And we're going to go on to Council Vice Chair, Yuki Litzugumara. Aloha, kakahiaka and ciao.
Ciao, ciao, ciao. Good morning, everybody. Looking forward to a great meeting and I'm glad to see we have some testifiers waiting to help educate us. Thanks.
All right. And we're going to continue on with Councilmember Tamara Paulton. Aloha, kakahiaka, good morning and ciao.
Aloha, kakahiaka and ciao.
We're going to continue with Councilmember Gabe Johnson. Aloha, kakahiaka and ciao. And it's not spelled ciao as in ciao fun, right? It's C-I-A-O.
Morning Chair, Councilmembers, community members. Ciao to all of you. Mahalo.
And I don't see Councilmember, oh, there we go. And good morning also and ciao to Councilmember Keanu Rollins Fernandez.
Aloha, kakahiaka Chair. Aloha, kakahiaka, kako. My Molokai New Yorkina. I'm at the Molokai District Office alone on my side of the office. And we currently have no testifiers here. Mahalo Chair.
We also are going to say good morning and aloha, kakahiaka and ciao to Councilmember Nohe Uwadens.
Good morning Chair, ciao everyone.
And we're going to end up with our East Maui Councilmember, Mr. Shane Senancy. Aloha, kakahiaka and ciao.
Aloha, kakahiaka Chair and ciao Bella. I'm here at my home office by myself and there are no testifiers at the Hana District Office.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have no testifiers either at the Lanai Office?
That is correct. There's no testifiers at the Lanai District Office.
Thank you. We have with us this morning from the Department of Court Counsel, Christina Tushikio, the Deputy Corporation Counsel. Good morning and ciao.
Good morning and ciao. Many chaired members.
And we also have the Director from the Department of Housing and Human Concerns is Lori Suakko. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Kama. I'll be filling in for Director Suakko today. Good morning and ciao.
Morning, Mr. Mataapa. We have other resources with us today and I'll tell you who they are and then when the time comes, they can come up here and have a seat. We have Mr. Spencer Lee, the Vice President and Sales Manager of Central Pacific Bank. Aloha, good morning and I'm glad that you're all here. We also have Cindy Smith, the Vice President Mortgage Loan Officer of Central Pacific Bank. Aloha, thank you for being here. We have Misty Griffith, the Mortgage Loan Originator with the Money Store here in Kau Lui. And we have Adam P. Roversi, the Director of the Ko'ee County Housing Agency. I think he might be joining us online this morning. Okay, thank you. We have our committee staff. We have our Legislative Analyst, Anna Lilis. Good morning, aloha and ciao.
Good morning Chair, good morning members.
And then we have our other Legislative Analyst, Paige Greco. Aloha and ciao.
Good morning Chair, good morning members.
And then we have our Committee Secretary, Miss Stacy Binneray. Aloha and ciao.
Aloha Chair and members.
And we have our Legislative Attorney, Ms. Carolyn Akata. Good morning and aloha, kakahiaka to you.
Aloha Chair and members.
And also we have our Clerk, Lea Denine. Aloha to you and see you. So members, thank you for attending today's HLU meeting. And we have two items on our agenda. The two items are HLU 6 and HLU 16. HLU 6 is Bill 12, which amends a subsection 2.96.060 of the Maui County Code relating to residential workforce housing deed restriction time periods. We also have HLU 16, which is Bill 74, 2023, relating to deed restricted periods for residential workforce housing units. So, in accordance with the Sunshine Law's Chair, I'll be calling for testimony for each item, agenda item, as that item is called up upon the agenda. We'll receive a presentation from our resources prior to public testimony today. So members, I ask that you would hold all of your questions for the presenters until after testimony has been closed. So members, since those items essentially deal with the same topic, the county code governing residential workforce housing deed restrictions, I will be asking for presentations from our resources to address the aspects of both proposed code amendments before taking public testimony on both items. So, members, today we have two pieces of legislation, Bill 12 and Bill 74, and both were introduced by Councilmember Paulton. So Bill 12 proposes to increase the deed restriction period for all income groups. For example, the restriction period for the below moderate income increases from 10 years to 20 years. There are also plain language changes in the bill to provide clarity. Bill 74, 2023, proposes to restart the deed restriction period of a residential workforce housing unit is sold during the deed restriction period. Currently, the time period for a deed restriction period remains tied to the original sale of the dwelling. The bill also proposes to remove the administration's ability to review and approve any waiver of the deed restriction regardless of the circumstances causing the sale of the dwelling. The bill also has language changes to provide clarity. Members, before I call upon our resources to speak to these two bills, I would like to ask a member of Paulton to speak on the legislation that she introduced. Member Paulton, what was yours?
Thank you. Did you want it for both bills right now? Okay. So the first one is just, you know, things that I've been hearing in the community that five, eight, and 10 is pretty short. And given the legislation that Member Johnson had passed last term and the ones about us being able to also fund infrastructure, which we had one in yesterday's BFED meeting about paying for that secondary road for Kilohana Makai, which I fully support, but we're putting more and more resources into these affordable housing. And every time it flips out of affordable housing, then that's less affordable housing for our people. And so the idea is that it's not just a lottery, it's an opportunity. If you don't live there for five, eight, and 10 years, if you don't live there for 10, 16, and 20 years, that all that investment that the county makes into the affordable housing through affordable housing funds, which are taxpayer funded, would pay forward to the next buyer to have more people have an opportunity. And there is a shared equity model involved. So it's not like, you know, if you sell before the deed restriction and you don't get any equity out of the house, it's just you share it with the county because the county invested also to make the affordable housing happen through affordable housing funds or other mechanisms. And so it's just an opportunity to make that last longer for our residents. And it's not a lottery where after five years, you can turn around and flip a house for like $2 million. And we had previously, I guess, gotten to this point, but it was at taking a try to look at what Kawhi was doing and I think it was at 50 years and we got ahead on that bill and then it died before final reading. So trying to do that, something a little bit more palatable than 50 years. And for the second bill, it's just, you know, if somebody has an affordable housing and say it's only deed restricted for five years and they sell it in the fourth year, somebody comes in and buys an affordable housing and in one year they can flip it and make big profit, move to the mainland or whatever, you move out of the county. And it's just about trying to keep our affordable housing as long as possible because we put so much effort into each affordable housing project that we'd like it to remain affordable housing for our working families of Maui. That was the impetus of this bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Okay, so I think what I want to do right now is, can we take a break for two minutes? Don't go anywhere, anybody. So it's 9:13, 9:15, we're going to reconvene. HLU will then recess. Thank you, members, for that short break. The HLU Committee is now
The chambers is muted, the chamber mic.
How about now, Keanu?
Oh, there we go. Mahalo Chair, mahalo staffs.
Thank you. Who was I? Okay, so we are now reconvened our HLU meeting at 9:15 a.m. I would like to, without objections, members, make Ms. Donna Ting a resource. And she's the woman right here sitting to my right. So without objections. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Spencer Lee, if you would
If you would proceed with your presentation, please. And could you tell the members a little bit about who you are and where you come from? I mean, not where you come from, but in terms of your relationship to the Yes, thank you.
Woman Kama and good morning, all council members. Anna, if you could please go to the next slide, I would like to use this slide and explain to everybody, you know, who I am and where I'm coming from. So I currently teach the Honolulu Board of Realtors Affordable Housing Class. It's called Hope Home Ownership Is Possible for Everyone. I train real estate agents and loan officers who sell the units, affordable units on all housing eligibility requirements on Oahu. That would include HHFTC, the state program, HCDAs for Kakaako, and Honolulu's city and county affordable program. I also work very, very closely with developers to help them navigate the affordable housing process, give them an understanding of what they can expect when they go to market on these affordable housing units. I personally checked eligibility, or my employees have, for thousands of affordable buyers in these affordable projects. And I personally worked with hundreds of affordable buyers myself to help them navigate the affordable buying process. Very, very passionate about affordable housing. It's something that I just decided to get into about 10 years ago. Next slide, please. So I just want to start with, you know, who is this for? Who are we talking about? We're definitely talking about the income category group of below moderate, moderate to above moderate. That's between 81, you know, anything over 80 to 140% AMI. I'm listing on there, you know, what that income cap is for family sizes of four. It's between $92,650 to under $62,120. So these are our working class neighbors. They're people who don't want to pay rent the rest of their lives. I would think that most people kind of fit in this income range here. These are people who want to get onto the housing ladder, but market price units are just not attainable, so they need a little bit of help. Next slide, please. So what I did with this slide is to show affordable housing projects on Oahu that have sold out and have not sold out. Most of the affordable housing on Oahu up until now has been projects with deed restrictions between two years and 10 years. So on the green bubble that sold outside, I list out affordable projects like Symphony that had 100 affordable units or reserve units. Kapuulani Residence, which had 292, the Central, which had 310, Ke'Kulahana, which had 375, Ali'i 150, Ulana 697, Melina 140. Ho'opili and Gentry are horizontal projects that kind of keep on going. So they're not done, but they continue to build affordable units. The ones that have not sold out, and these are projects that started their sales 2020 or before. The ones that didn't sell out are the Park on Ke'AMuku, which has 146 affordable units, or Sky Alamona East, which has 84 affordable units. Both of those projects in the red bubble have deed restrictions that are greater than 10 years. And these are also the only two projects on Oahu that have tried going to market and had deed restrictions that were greater than 10 years. But I hope that this shows that, on the next slide, please, Anna.
Can I ask a quick question?
I should remain muted until the presentation is over. Mahalo.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I wanted to show here, I know I have limited time and it's probably too much to go over in just a few minutes, but I wanted to show that roughly two thirds of the Park on Ke'AMuku's affordable housing units remain 30 years within the first, second, and third marketing period. Each marketing period is 120 days. However, on the third row there, you'll see that there's 51 units that if they don't sell after the first marketing period, then in the second marketing period, 120 days later, the affordability restriction period drops to 20 years. And then whatever doesn't sell would drop to 10 years. That was their idea of how to expand the buyer pool in case these units didn't sell. You'll see that on the right-hand side, I'm showing that they started sales in October of 2022, but up until now, over a year later, they have only sold 25 out of 146 affordable housing units. So it, after the initial launch, people are, they learn about the 30-year period and there's just no interest afterwards. Next slide, please. Sky Alamona East has 84 affordable units. You'll see that their solution to expand the buyer pool after the first marketing period, if they don't sell, they remain 30 years. However, they expand the AMI pool. So the units that were tagged as 100% AMI cap, if they don't sell, they would go to 120% AMI cap. And then whatever doesn't sell can go to 140% AMI cap. The last bottom row there shows that for 42 units, again, their concept was if they don't sell, then they'll drop the restriction period to 20 years and whatever doesn't sell would drop the restriction period to 10 years. Again, all in an effort to expand the buyer pool, but you can see that up until now, which they've started selling since September of 2022, they've only sold 14 out of 84 units. So this idea of trying to expand the buyer pool, it's just not working by expanding the AMI categories. This building is already fully constructed. Temporary certificate of occupancy is in hand. All of the market units are occupied. So we have 70 vacant affordable housing units currently. And it's right in metro Honolulu, so pretty crazy. The big takeaway is that folks are refusing to buy where the deed restriction period is greater than 10 years. I think that these two projects, the only and the first two projects that went out to market with deed restrictions greater than 30 years were a test, if you will, to see what the market would bear. And I think they show the answer. Next slide, please. So I believe that we should have a clear distinction between rental and for-sale housing programs. I believe that the rental program should definitely exist. It is there for a purpose and people not interested or cannot buy separately. I believe that there should be a desirable for-sale affordable housing program for below moderate to above moderate income folks who can qualify for a mortgage. I believe that any regulations that would turn a for-sale program into what is, I believe, a pseudo-rental program, I believe that exacerbates and increases the wealth gap because the below moderate to above moderate income folks will refuse to buy those affordable units. And if they refuse to buy, they will never get on the housing ladder. And we all know that getting on the housing ladder is good. Next slide, please. So why do we need to keep affordable for-sale housing attractive enough for folks to want to buy them? As I said before, it expands the potential buyer pool. That means that the affordable units actually sell. If the affordable units sell, then the developers will be confident that their project will pencil out. They're not in it to lose money. Developers would take on the actual risk of building, which means that more affordable units would get built. More affordable units getting built would mean that home prices would go down. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show just a price comparison between Maui and Oahu. If it, for those who might not know already, the median single price, the median single family home price on Maui is 1.2 million as of December 2023. On Oahu, it's $996,500. For condominiums on Maui, it's 870, and Oahu, it's 510. My only reason for showing this is just to point out that the housing crisis on Maui is even worse than on Oahu. Next slide, please. So again, in summary, I believe we should have policies that expand the affordable buyer pool. I believe that if we do do that, more developers will build affordable housing. And any, any kind of efficiencies we can build or, you know, anytime there's a toss-up on what should be done and, you know, there's a lot of things to consider, all else being equal, I believe we should lean toward making the units more desirable for buyers and not putting up more roadblocks. Next slide, please. I want to just take a minute, if I have it, to mention that the items for Bill 12, most of the proposals that I see there are to extend the affordability period. Would not be in favor of that. And for Bill 74, I'm actually good with the comments in there to the foreclosure comment and to restart the affordability period if it is sold during the initial affordability period. With that, I'll be done. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Lee. Okay, Ms. Griffith. Are you ready? Or you're going to? Okay, so before we do, Ms. Ting, could you just kind of, for the record, identify your expertise in this area of deed restrictions, please?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Oh, thank you. Hi, my name is Donna Ting. I've been in real estate on Maui since 1972, probably before most of you were born. I most recently did an affordable project in Kihei called Hali Kaiola. And I am here because I was saddled by all the work and hard work that you did. I want to praise the council for having vision, but I'm from the trenches. I used the law. I did what was asked of me. And I want to tell you the results because Maui is my home. My mother and dad met here during World War II and I was raised in Honolulu, but Maui is my home. This is where my grandchildren go to school. This is where I will probably live and die the rest of my life. And I've seen many real estate markets, but nothing like the last two years. It really has been, Hali Kaiola had 40 units. And statistically, in America, people move every 13.2 years, okay? Every seven years in the life of a person, there are changes now, whether the change is a marriage, a death, a new baby, just statistically every seven years. So they either grow or they shrink families. And the deed restrictions that we had at Hali Kaiola, 20 years, I just have to tell you, it was very difficult. We had over 3,000 applicants for Hali Kaiola. There were only 40 units. There were 12 below moderate, there were 20 moderate, and there were eight above moderate. And the laws pertaining to them and the 20-year deed restriction, this is an email, I'm going to read, that's why I brought my glasses, I'm going to read exactly what people wrote to me. And these are county, this is county employee. Thank you so much for the heads up on this unit in Hali Kaiola. However, Matt and I have decided that we will pass solely based on the 20-year lockdown and the 75 slash 25% equity payback. We really appreciate all of your help on this, but we really don't want to take away an opportunity that another family may really want. In the meantime, we will continue to look for other opportunities that may come up for us. And this is a county employee. I can't tell you how difficult it was to sell the last few units. And for the developer, that's scary because they're having to make the monthly maintenance fees for empty units, the taxes for empty units. The developer, he is not going to be doing another affordable housing project. He just, I think his feet were just held too long to the flames. It was difficult selling. And I mean, our appraisals were almost $200,000 more than what we were selling the units for. So I just want to educate you today, and that's what we're all doing today.
Okay. Donna, can you hold on to that thought?
Sure.
We're going to take a five-minute break. We're having technical issues. HLU recesses for till 9:36. HOU is recessed for till nine thirty-six. The HOU committee will now reconvene. It is now nine thirty-six a.m. And my apologies for interrupting you, Ms. Ting. If you'd like to continue, and then we'll go on to Misty's presentation.
Okay, just a quick continuance. The reason that America is great is because people were able to own the land, they were able to own the house, and they were able to better their family situation. That's why America's great. If you lived in Russia, you lived and died on the land, but it was never yours. This is homeownership is the key to making a prosperous community, and I believe that. And that's why I continue to do real estate when my children said, you should just be home and be tutu. You don't got to go out there anymore. But it's important. It's important because Maui County, this is, we're building our basic community, the people that serve everyone else. And it's really important. So anyway, next is Misty Griffiths.
Okay, Misty, you ready for your presentation?
Aloha, kakayaka. Good morning. My name's Misty Griffiths, and I work for The Money Store. I've been a mortgage loan officer in this industry for well over thirty-five years. And prior to that, I was in real estate. So I have quite a bit of knowledge in our Maui industry, I want to mention, because I've worked here only on Maui for thirty-five-plus years in this industry. Okay, some of the topics I think we're going to cover for me is the twenty-year deed restriction, the shared appreciation, the Affordable Housing Guideline policy, and what would have been the impacts on our affordable homeownership here on Maui.
Next screen, please.
Okay, I was privileged to be a part of Hali Kaiola project, which Donna mentioned. It was forty workforce duplex homes. Alala builders were the builders, and it price ranges from three ninety to five ninety-nine.
Next screen.
This is the affordable guidelines. I can't see it, but if you go to the next screen, I made it a little larger, thank God. Okay, I'm going to bring, is this okay? Okay.
Remember, you should have gotten a packet you can follow along to.
Yeah, okay, I can see this. Okay, so as you can see, we had twelve units that was below moderate. And the income price range for this project was between seventy-six and ninety-five of the AMI. And a moderate, we had twenty units between five twenty and five sixty, and five ninety-nine was the above moderate. Does anybody could make the presentation larger? Because I see tomorrow's having trouble seeing it as well. Oh, there we go, there we go. That's much better. You can go to the next screen. We're good. Thank you. Okay, so this is what the project looked like. In the faded yellow, that was the below market. There was a few of them. Those were two bedrooms, one and a half bath. In the blue, that was the moderate. And in the orange colored of the project, those were the above moderate. Now, the blue and the orange were three bedrooms, two bath units. Phase one started from the right, top right-hand screen, and then it ended at phase three, there were three phases, was the below moderate. And you can go to the next. Okay, as Donna mentioned, thousands of families inquired on just forty units here in Maui for this particular project. However, as lenders, we could only qualify a hundred and ten. Sixty-four below moderate, thirty-two moderate, and fourteen above. The applications for this deadline was twenty, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and then the lottery was in March of twenty twenty-two. So forty lucky homeowners, potential buyers, were excited to get into this project. And as you can see at the very bottom, the first unit closed in February of twenty twenty-three, the following year, and that's when the first phase and part of phase two was completed. And then the last unit closed in October seventeenth in twenty twenty-three. Next screen. Okay, so here's a timeline here. Lottery took place in twenty twenty-two March. Forty families was getting their loans approved. However, came twenty twenty-three, beginning of twenty twenty-three, buyers were canceling. There were several reasons, but the bottom line is, it took us ten months to sell forty units that were far below the market value. As Donna mentioned, they were coming in with appraisals well over two hundred thousand. And we ended up having to sit open house from February to July of twenty twenty-three just to sell four or five units. Okay, next screen. Okay, we know that the interest was one of the problems that we had, because if you look at the ten-year mortgage interest history here, at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, rates were running at about three percent. Come March of twenty twenty-three, when these homes are starting to get occupied, we're now at six point three. In August, it was almost eight percent. It was a huge jump. Nobody had that magic crystal ball to figure out that this was going to happen. But as lenders, when we pre-qualify our borrowers in a project that's going to be one year out before it's built, and you can agree with me or not, we're normally qualifying them at two points higher, anticipating increase in interest rates. We just never knew this was going to happen. So that was part of the reason why we had a dropout. Next screen. Okay, this is an actual scenario that happened, and I wanted to share it because it was a below moderate income. Why did the buyers cancel? Part of it was the interest rate. So you can see here, purchase price was three ninety-nine, down payment three percent, eleven thousand, loan amount was three eighty-seven, fairly low amount to qualify. Your principal and interest payment in February of twenty twenty-two is at three point eight percent, three hundred and eighth, and it was sixteen fifty-seven. Come July, come July, that payment is now twenty-three eighty-one. Still relatively low, but that's an increase for this home buyer of seven hundred twenty-five dollars a month. That is huge. So what happened with the debt-to-income ratio, which means thirty-nine percent of your gross income, when we calculate, we take thirty-nine percent of that was what the figure was in twenty twenty-two for your mortgage payment and your debts. Now it jumped to fifty-one percent. I have that circled because I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. Bottom line is, on a conventional loan, forty-nine percent is your max debt-to-income ratio. As you can see, this borrower was not approved, right? So go to the next screen. We sat open houses, there you see Donna with my colleague Anna and myself in the background, and we sat open houses every weekend. But we didn't sit, we stood. We didn't have a chance to sit down. We couldn't even drink a thing of water because we never even advertised. We just put it on social media. When I was like afraid to put that open house sign because they were standing outside, we put the open house sign in, and they were coming in. And this is for four units that we couldn't sell, okay? And that was in the moderate price range, which was surprising to me. I thought it would have been the higher, but we couldn't sell it. We had two fallouts in the below moderate, and I think we had four in the moderate and one in the above moderate. And it was quite amazing to have that many people in our open house. In fact, one of your executive assistants from the mayor's office in housing, Pono Asano, came to stop and visit our open house, and he had to wait till it was over at four thirty-five o'clock to just ask us a simple question. You can turn the screen. And many of our pre-qualified buyers that were coming in were asking the same question. Why haven't you sold out yet? We were at five hundred thirty to five hundred sixty. Appraisals were coming in at seven twenty-five. What was these buyers' objection? They never even questioned the interest rate, which was what I was thinking, right? As a lender, they questioned the deed, the twenty-year deed restriction and the twenty-five percent shared appreciation. Next screen. So this is what's in the bill. I'm going to read it out to you. The appraisal of the property, this is the maximum resale price if you sell before the twenty years. The appraisal of the property is required before occupancy, which would be the first appraisal that you saw there. A second appraisal shall be or is required upon the decision to sell the unit. Twenty-five percent of the difference between the two appraisals must be added to the owner's purchase price. Next screen. So as you can imagine, buyers are asking me, it was on the same deed restriction which we had at this particular project. So I'm really excited to share this because it was really a pilot to see what happens on a twenty-year deed restriction. Because across the board, whether you're moderate, below moderate, or above moderate, everybody had a twenty-year deed restriction. There wasn't a stagger of that sort. So a lot of the questions that were asked of me, and I believe Donna, and Gina, which is the other real estate broker, well, what if I sell in ten years? What if I sell? What's going to happen? How much can I sell for? Because they don't understand what that is. They expect us professionals to know it. I'm going to break it down for you. So we have the twenty-year deed restriction, twenty-five percent shared appreciation. Let's say in the tenth year, I decide to sell my unit. The first appraisal, as I said, was it came in at seven twenty-five, seven hundred thousand. So current appraisal, let's say in ten years, it comes in at eight twenty-five. We know it's already selling more for that for three bedrooms right now, but I'm just being nice about this. So it comes in at eight twenty-five. So the difference of that is a hundred thousand. Now, you're going to multiply that by twenty-five percent, which gives the home seller, the homeowner, twenty-five percent, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. So maximum sales price is you're going to take the purchase price, add your twenty-five thousand of shared appreciation, so your max sales price is five eighty-five. Next screen. So by April twenty twenty-three, Alala Builders calls me up. Money Store, thank you for doing the Fannie Mae approval. We need an FHA approval because nobody is buying. And just like Spencer had mentioned, to get a broader pool of home buyers. So that one that had the fifty-one percent debt-to-income ratio would qualify under the FHA guidelines. So let me explain to you the process that they paid for to get us, they paid about twenty-seven hundred dollars to get the project FHA approved. This is April of twenty twenty-three. The debt-to-income ratio on an FHA loan can go as high as fifty-five percent. Typically, interest rates on FHA loans run about a half, one and a half to one percent lower than what the conventional interest rates are. The great thing is, you can bring in a bigger pool of buyers because your FICO score can go as low as five eighty. The next screen. So we go out and we try to get it FHA-approved. Okay, let me, this was the obstacle that we faced when talking with HUD. I'm going to read you in accordance with twenty-four CFR two oh three forty-one. I can't see the rest of it, but FHA considers a reasonable share of appreciation to be at least fifty percent. HUD does not object to affordable housing programs whereby the homeowner's share of appreciation is on a sliding scale beginning at zero, provided that within two years, the homeowner would be permitted to retain fifty percent appreciation. If the program sets a maximum sales price restriction, the borrower must be permitted to retain one hundred percent of the appreciation. But those are the FHA guidelines. Go to the next screen, please. Project was denied. Next screen. All right, I hope I can go just a little bit longer. Donna talked about the thirteen years, average homeowner will sell in thirteen years. Go next screen. Okay, this was really important for me, and I really want to get this point across. Five hundred sixty thousand, this was an actual client. He says, I'm going to put a hundred thousand dollars. I got money. My loan amount's going to be four sixty. He's excited because his payments are going to be lower. He says, what if I sell in the tenth year? His balance in the tenth year will be three hundred ninety thousand. His principal paid was sixty-nine thousand. Remember now, his purchase price is max five eighty-five in our scenario. Sales at five eighty-eight, five eighty-five, three ninety balance, he will net one hundred ninety-four thousand. That's fantastic, right? Can use that for a down payment. However, a hundred thousand was his money, sixty-nine thousand is what he paid down. He got twenty-five thousand. I said to him, it's up to you what you want to do. However, put minimum down payment because you can qualify, number one. Number two, your hundred thousand dollars return on investment is only two and a half percent period in the ten-year period. You're better off putting it in a CD. Go next screen. At four percent. Right now, I think we're getting five percent. Bottom line, on the right side, you see that scenario if he did twenty thousand down, he nets there one twenty-six less than the first scenario. However, he still got eighty thousand in a CD that's earning at four percent. That's thirty-two thousand at the end of day when he sells. He'll end up with two hundred thirty-eight thousand. That was a better scenario for him than putting all his money into there and letting it sit. Next screen. Hope I'm not going too quick for you folks. I'm not sure, and maybe I'm just not educated on this, but the bills asked for the below moderate to twenty, moderate to sixteen, and above moderate to ten. And I'm not sure why that is. So if the council can school me on that, I would be appreciative. Because let me just remind you that the Hali Kaiola project was twenty years across the board. It didn't matter if you didn't have that much income. To me, I feel that the below moderate is being... Next. Mai Manao, I had a local family of five walk away from this project. Perfect, perfect couple to own this property. Three children, excellent jobs, savings, down payment, excellent credit. I was so excited to get them into this project at the five sixty price range. They questioned, they questioned. They gave me those questions that you saw about the selling in ten years because their kids are going to be in college in ten years. They need that money, right? So they declined to take it. And their response, which is, try not to cry, but it's heartbreaking for me because I'm born and raised here in Ohe, local family, born and raised here in Maui. They moved to Vegas, the ninth Hawaiian island. And they can buy a house for four hundred thousand. They don't have a deed restriction, and they have one hundred percent share equity, and they can transfer with their jobs. Hard to see that, and we see that happen to all our families. First responder, I won't go through that, but he did purchase. I told his wife, if you go back to work, you're going to be over the sales price guideline that the county sets and not be able to purchase in this project. And they were desperate to have something because rents were too high. Next screen. So she didn't go back to work till after the project closed. The evaluation of my results was buyers were not receptive to the twenty-year deed restriction. Twenty-five shared appreciation was not enough. FHA approval would help many buyers with the higher debt-to-income ratio. Twenty-year deed restriction will not attract future developers for workforce development, and Donna testified on that, as well as Spencer. The irony was that this was a workforce homes. However, restrictive restrictions did the opposite, which we found out. We didn't know this was going to happen. It forced our local families to look, to move away and to look at other options. Would a ten-year deed restriction and fifty percent shared appreciation be a better option for our Maui ohana? I'm not sure, but we have to investigate that. Should we take a closer look at the sales price guidelines? Those are the questions that I have. Next screen. And I will sum this up. Next screen. I realized, no, down, the screen before. Okay, screen before. Screen before that one? Yeah, that's okay. I realized it was within good intentions that our Maui County Council have, and I can't see it. All right, down a little bit more, yeah. Okay, I believe it was with good intentions that our county council had put the deed restrictions in this project in hopes of making it affordable for our local ohana. I am all for that, to attract developers. However, it did have the opposite effect, and we found that out. We had difficulty selling the workforce homes. Donna testified to that. Yes, it is due to some of the interest increase, but however, what we found out, the biggest obstacle was due to convincing the homeowners to take the twenty-year deed restriction. It was far more restrictive. I actually had home buyers tell me, hey, could we, once we get our association, could we go back to the county council and maybe get it a ten-year deed restriction? I said, I'm not in politics. You got to go find that out for yourself. But it doesn't hurt to try as your HOA. But as you know, a lot can happen, Donna said, twenty years, divorce, debt, our parents get older, we got to go take care of our kapuna. We have medical expenses. Instead of giving our hand up to our kamaina, we are inadvertently suppressing them, pushing our families to move to the ninth Hawaiian island, leaving Maui County only for the rich from the mainland, our foreigners that we see here. We're in the real estate trends, and so we know, we know what loans we're doing for these people. They live here part-time. I say ole to that. It is our kulianna to meet things pono, uama okei o kaina i kapono. The life of the land is perpetuated in righteousness. It's our people. We need to perpetuate this. It is our responsibility. Next screen. These are go my pastor. He told me to, he told me this, the answer isn't the problem. We've identified some of the problems here today. Gather the experts in our industry, realtors, developers, bankers, mortgage professionals, our county housing department. We don't even communicate with them. Council members, all of us have to start a round table. Collectively, we can solve this problem. I believe that. You know, Maui is noko oi, right? So we got to, we got to live up to that. Together, we can find a better solution for our ohana here on Maui. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If you need to reach me, though, on the last screen, I have my email there. It's easy. It's misty@themoneystore.com.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Griffiths.
Thank you for letting me go longer.
Okay, so I think Mr. Roversi is on the line. Okay, so I think Mr. Roversi is on the line.
Adam, if you could unmute your camera. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome. And thank you so much for attending today's Housing and Land Use Committee meeting all the way from.
Um, so have you been listening in? And I'd like to ask if you have any comments about what you've heard.
Please unmute your mic. There should be a microphone icon at the top of your blue jean screen.
Or you can push the letter M on your keyboard.
That too. Chair.
Or staff can give you the number.
Yeah, can we have a two-minute recess, Chair?
Okay, members, we're going to take a two-minute recess to help Mr. Roversi to get his audio going. Uh, HIU is in recess till 9:30. The HIU committee meeting of, um, January 24, 2024 will now reconvene. And now that we've got Mr. Roversi back, thank you so very much, sir. Um, so, um, thank you for being here this morning. So we'd like you to comment on the proposed legislation as it, uh, based on your experience with Kauai, but also comments on what you have heard this morning. So thank you.
Aloha, Chair Kama, members of, uh, council members. I'm Adam Roversi, the Housing Director for the County of Kauai. I've, uh, been in my position here for four years. Um, and previous to that was one of, um, our county's deputy, deputy county attorneys. I'm going to refrain from expressly supporting or opposing either bills. And I'd rather just tell you about Kauai's experience and what we find has worked for us so far here on Kauai. Recognizing that, um, Kauai is a, a particular situation and our, our efforts and policies may not directly apply to Maui. So I'm not going to prejudge what would be of benefit to you. And I certainly don't compare us to Honolulu. Um, we don't have high-rise apartment towers. We, we have, we're a small-scale rural community of single-family homes primarily. So starting off, uh, prior to 2008 on Kauai, we had a 10-year deed restriction for, um, affordable homes that were required as part of our inclusionary zoning policy. So one of the last projects that was built pre-2008 under that 10-year, um, restriction was the Titcomb subdivision in Kilauea. That, um, subdivision was a 42-unit subdivision of single-family two and three-bedroom homes. That was, um, a affordable, it was an entirely affordable project that was imposed as a requirement on the Princeville Resort, which is on the North Shore here of Kauai, which is primarily luxury vacation homes. Those homes were sold, uh, the 49 homes were sold, um, through a lottery process for prices, uh, just under $200,000 to qualify and income-qualified Kauai residents. Um, as I mentioned, under a 10-year affordability requirement. A deed restriction that functions similar to what Maui has with a few minor differences, but it's largely the same. So at the end of that 10-year affordability period, um, the vast majority of those homes were put on the market, um, with the, uh, homes being sold at 300% and more profits to the original purchase, purchase prices. I don't have data on all of the, um, buyers who sold, but anecdotally, I could say that most of the buyers that I am aware of, uh, who did sell, ended up leaving Kauai. Um, even though they were making significant profits on the homes that they had purchased, they still weren't able to compete in our market, uh, at, given their income levels because the market had dramatically increased by, by, um, late 2007, when the affordability period was anywhere. Leaping, leaping forward, um, in 2008, we implemented a, uh, Kauai County's housing policy and our affordability period was increased to 20 years at that point, um, with much of the same provisions of buyback, county buyback provision. And the last large project that was created, that was, uh, completed and sold under that, um, provision was a project in Lahui, um, developed by D.R. Horton. Lahui is our town core. That project was 151 total homes, um, two, three-bedroom units, both single-family and duplexes. And under our housing policy, 32 of those homes were required to be sold at affordable prices. And that 20-year deed restriction was attached to those homes. All 32 of those affordable homes with the deed restriction attached were sold to local residents during the pre-development phase, but there were no unsold homes. Um, and the sales prices of those homes, that was before I became the director, but the sales prices were, um, high 400,000s, low 500,000s, depending on the exact unit and the bedroom count. And we, we have since then exercised our buybacks, um, rights on a couple of those homes and resold them to Kauai. Um, in 2020, uh, Kauai County, um, again amended its housing policy to increase our 20-year affordability requirement to 50 years or for-sale housing. That policy went into effect end of 2020. There have been no residential developments on Kauai since that change, but I don't think that's indicative of the affordability period so much as just the, the rate of development on Kauai. Um, the couple of projects, um, we only had one large residential project attempt to move forward since 2020. And that project failed, um, because of their inability to get land use commission approvals. So, um, they, they were attempting to move forward with knowledge of the housing policy and the changes made and, um, but was never, never became effective. Other projects that have moved forward since the 2020 amendment have either to rental units or opted to pay in lieu fees, but both of which are similar options on Kauai to, um, Maui's housing policy. So, um, I, as I mentioned, D.R. Horton, um, they, they might prove, uh, might be able to provide their own insights, but they, they did not have any issues selling the 32, um, affordable units here on Kauai, um, under the 20-year deed restriction. I have no examples to provide with, uh, provide to you under our new 50-year policy. I can offer, however, um, a, a parallel example for, for what it's worth. So the housing, the county itself is largely, is quickly becoming the largest housing developer on Kauai because we, we simply don't have a lot of residential developments. The developments that we do have in the last five to six years have largely focused on resort properties. And when the county develops homes, um, we're not selling fee simple homes anymore. Kauai County is now, um, operating a limited appreciation leasehold program. Our single-family homes are sold as leasehold properties, um, with the, under 99-year ground leases that may be renewed. Um, so far, we have just under 30 homes in our limited depreciation leasehold program. So obviously, that's not apples and apples when we're talking leaseholds with deed restrict, with, that have, you know, a built-in deed restriction because you're buying a leasehold property to fee simple properties. But, um, at least to date, at the quantities of homes we're developing, we've had no problem finding buyers for and selling our leasehold properties that have deed, deed restrictions that don't allow people to utilize the homes as a financial vehicle. I guess, is similar in nature to what we're talking about when we're talking about deed restriction. I, I would offer that our, our leasehold program and our 50-year affordability requirement that we've imposed, you, you can make your own decisions, but it, it begins to view, I guess it ties into the housing agency's mission. So my mission, as is stated in our, in our charter and, you know, our ordinances and so forth, is to provide greater opportunities for safe, decent, quality housing for the people of Kauai. My mission, rightly or wrongly, is not to help selected lottery winners build financial wealth. Um, my goal is to put people in housing and to create a growing pool of affordable housing on Kauai, um, not simply to produce housing needs. So, and, and people are obviously free to disagree with that. We are, the median home price on Kauai now is $1.3 million. We have a growing, um, numbers of homelessness, uh, based on our point in time count from the prior year. Uh, yesterday I did a survey of, um, MLS. There are five homes on Kauai for sale under $600,000. Two of those five homes are DHHL leaseholds. The other three are tear downs. So when we're, um, offering our homes, um, our affordable homes, either these under our leasehold program or going back to the D.R. Horton, um, project that had that 20-year requirement, we're selling homes, uh, that are so dramatically underpriced compared to market um, that we at least to date in our current environment have not had issues finding buyers ready and willing to buy either our leasehold homes or our deed restricted homes, giving their, given their virtual complete lack of alternative opportunities. Um, our buyers are not weighing generally whether to invest in a CD versus buy a home as an investment. They're simply looking for a roof over their head to raise their children. And I know that's a, that's a different way of thinking of housing as a financial vehicle versus as a necessity of life, like food, water, shelter. And then you asked if I had any comments on the prior speakers. So like I mentioned, I don't want to try to compare Kauai's experience to what's happening in Honolulu and, uh, some, uh, large tower developments that I don't know the details of. But I, but I would offer that it struck me that, and again, I don't know the details of the projects that were discussed, that, that it seemed as though many of the issues finding buyers and sales might be more largely connected to skyrocketing interest rates over the last three years um, than simply buyer's willingness. But again, I don't, I don't know the specifics of that. So I appreciate the opportunity to, um, offer comments um, and share a little bit about what we're doing on Kauai. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roversi, for being here with us. Um, and hopefully you'll, um, stick around a little while longer because once the testimonies are completed, then the members of the council will have opportunities to ask all of our resources questions, um, that they might have. So, um.
I'm happy to have you. Thank you.
So, uh, Director Suhako, hopefully you're still here with us. Osamalu, I'm sorry, that's right. So, um, Samalu, are you still here? And could you please comment from the department?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, uh, Chair Kama. Aloha to the committee. Uh, my name again is Samalu Mataafa and I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Housing and Human Concerns. So I just wanted to thank all of you for having me here today to present the department's comments. Um, before I go into the comments, Chair, uh, would you like me to present, uh, the comments on both Bill 12 and Bill 74? Or should I do Bill 12? Okay. I'll do that. So, um, I'll start off with Bill 12. Uh, the department is focused on creating more housing solutions for our residents, whether it's for sale or rental housing. As you know, uh, through all the studies and plans that were done over the past five years or so, it shows that we need a diverse array of housing for almost every income level here, county. Um, along the lines of a lot of the speakers that came before me, the department did do its independent research on how Bill 12, if it was enacted, could affect potential buyers and then also the development of future workforce housing. Um, so we did research on this and we relied on case studies of past developments that had longer deed restrictions. And we also reached out to our lending and development community here on the island to get their feedback on how the bill would affect, um, the county overall. Uh, much in line with what Mr. Spencer, Spencer Lee said earlier. Um, when we reached out to our lending sources, what they had indicated to us was 10 years is the acceptable term for owner occupied, uh, owner occupancy deed restrictions. When we had detailed conversations with them, they mentioned that increasing the deed restrictions past 10 years could tighten up the underwriting for marginal buyers. And those marginal buyers are typically those that are either first-time home buyers or just barely make that income, uh, threshold in order to qualify for a home loan. So it would unduly, uh, harm their chances at getting a loan, um, if the deed restrictions did go past 10 years. Through its experience, um, on the case study side with past workforce housing developments, um, and extended deed restrictions, uh, we did notice that it, we saw a change in behavior for the buyers, as was mentioned previously as well. Um, we noticed that a lot of, uh, the interest initially in the housing project that we took a look at, uh, did wane once that 20-year deed restriction was made known. And what we had figured out with, uh, those case studies and in talking with the lending sources and the developers as well was that, uh, it more notably affects multifamily projects and single-family projects. Um, because those multifamily projects are typically the starter home model. Um, a lot of the applicants that are applying are typically younger families, um, that are, are looking for their first home, uh, for something to grow into and grow out of, in order to help their family move forward. So what we saw was that, much in line with what everybody else had said, um, on the panel today, Ms. Griffith, Mr. Spent, Mr. Lee, and then, um, also, um, Donna Ting. Um, we did see behavior change in the longer deed restricted A studies that we had here, um, in the county. Um, how this affects, uh, development, right? So if you have, uh, a shrinking pool of, uh, qualified buyers that aren't interested in the longer deed restriction, we could see a chilling effect on future development for workforce housing. So, um, we do have a lot of rental projects. Well, not a lot, we do have quite a few rental projects moving forward here in the island, on the island. Uh, but we also want to see, um, the workforce housing piece also move forward. And if we implemented longer deed restrictions, um, what we've seen with developers is if that pool shrinks, it gives them pause on whether they're going to move forward with a future project or not. So we'd want to see those projects still move forward, um, without the restrictions, uh, for, uh, owner occupancy. So in, uh, conclusion, that wraps up generally, uh, the department's comments. Uh, at this time, we don't support the bill to increase the deed restrictions. We, um, take note of everything that was said here today, uh, in committee with the panel. We thank council for allowing us to testify. I'll just reiterate that, uh, we want to see more units come online, both rental and workforce housing, uh, for-sale units. And we want to be able to create more options for our, our residents here. And unfortunately, with the research that we have done, it indicates that posing longer deed restrictions will actually do that. deed restrictions will actually do the opposite and have a chilling effect on some of the workforce housing developments uh, for for sale units. So if you want me to move on, I can also move on to Bill seventy four, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, the department overall does not have any major objections to Bill seventy four. Uh, we would ask that if the intent is to move this bill forward though, that uh, we reinstate the power of the department to issue a waiver um, that was taken out in section E. And that would be the comments for Bill seventy four. Uh, we are supportive, but we would just like to retain that power to uh, continue on with uh, issuing waiver in special circumstances for uh, workforce housing. And open to any questions. I know you'll be taking testimony next, but I will be here and available if the committee has any questions of me moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mataafa.
Yeah. Yes, Chair, we currently have four people signed up to testify.
Oh, wait a, okay, so I'm thinking if you, okay, let's take the testimony and then we'll take a break. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead with our first testifier.
Chair, the first testifier is Lawrence Carnicelli in the council chamber to be followed by Sterling Higa.
Good morning, Chair Kama, members. Uh, my name is Lawrence Carnicelli, uh, testifying on Bill twelve and seventy four. Um, I, you, you guys all know who I am. Um, what I'd like to do and just try to, there's so much to cover here. Let's talk about the ordinance, let's talk about the bill, we'll talk about the consequences, and then hopefully I have enough time left over to even offer up some solutions. So chapter two point nine six is, let's, let's, what is it? It's a tax. It's a tax on development. It says, okay, twenty five percent of whatever you build has to be affordable housing. That's what this is, right? So if we talk about it in general, that's just what two nine six is. It then says that those twenty five percent of those, those homes, you, the buyers only get twenty five percent of equity for ten years, and then it pops totally straight to to, to market after ten years. I don't like this bill, I mean, this ordinance. I think two point nine six is extremely flawed. I think it's a failure. I think that two point nine six is an abject failure to try to create affordable housing on Maui, and it's proven because we don't have any. So I love what you're trying to do, member Paulton, and trying to make, how can we get more housing? I think a, a flaw is to try to optimize something that should be eliminated. And that's true for engineering, that's true for legislatures, true for whatever it is. To say, okay, this twenty five percent equity now goes to twenty years, we just make it longer and that's better. I like the thought of it, but I don't think that it actually creates more housing, and I don't think it actually creates more affordability in, 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 in really trying to create I think we also need to talk about not all homes are equal. Um, Mr. Mataafa talked about that. There are certain homes that are built to be step up homes, right? And so I'm not here to defend two point nine six and to defend, okay, we need to commodify, I know that's the word that people like to use here, commodify housing. I think there needs to be a balance. I think what we need to do is find a way to where we can not have poor people stay poor, and we also want to have it to where it doesn't just go straight to market. And then we lose, because really what we're talking about here is, 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 let's boil down this bill to where does the equity go? Where does the equity go? That's what we're talking about. Because right now seventy five percent of the equity stays in the home for ten years. And they're saying, okay, with the bill saying, okay, seventy five percent of the equity's got to stay in the home for twenty years. Sounds great. But I think that Donna and Misty talked about what people think about that. The market has said that. And by the way, I think they under, underplayed how hard they worked to try to sell those homes. Those two ladies, I can't even tell you. Anyways, that's, so um, that's my three minutes. Can I have my second three minutes for the second bill?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Um, gosh, there's so much I want to go over. This kind of is a zero sum game. If we say that, that it's, that the equity stays in the home, then our local people don't get to take advantage of that. However, if we're talking about equity, let's talk about, there's not all equities created equal. There's the original discount worth seven hundred, you're buying it for five. There's two hundred thousand dollars worth of equity. There's market appreciation over time, that's equity. There's also sweat equity that you put into it, right? If I put, if I make it nicer and everything like that, okay, there's equity as well. And then you also have possibly maybe the county or the state or the feds put in extra money, and that's equity as well. In the current model, for after ten years, all four of those equities go in your pocket, goes in the buyer's pocket. I would agree, that doesn't seem prudent. But so I appreciate the bill coming forward so we can have that discussion. Let's have the discussion about where does the equity go and how do we make this to where it's actually beneficial for the people that are buying it? It actually makes them want to buy it? And then the people that are building these don't go away. The director over on Kauai said that the private sector has left. They have to build homes, the, the government's got to build homes. The private sector left. We don't want that to happen here. We don't want that to happen here. So anyways, I appreciate your time, Chair. Um, I appreciate the bill, I appreciate the intent. Um, however, I think that I, I stand in opposition of both. Because the other thing, on the second bill, just real quickly, uh, as I leave, is the difficulty that a developer has selling a twenty year deed restriction. The buyer who then has to sell, let's say eight years from now, I'm going to go move, they're going to have that same problem. What if they can't sell their house because it's got twenty year deed restriction? So anyways, thank you, Chair, thank you, members, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you. So um, I'm going to ask you to hold off your questions for Mr. Carnicelli. You have a question for Mr. Johnson, but Mr. Johnson, if you please indulge your chair. Um, I got carried away and forgot to read the public testimony. You all know, okay, I, okay. Okay, so for Buddhist participants, please use the chair, the, the chat to indicate that you wish to testify. We'll take testimony on both items, please identify the item to which you are testifying. Please keep your audio and video muted until staff calls you to testify. Written testimony is encouraged and can be submitted via the e comment link at mauicounty.us/agendas. Our testimony is limited to three minutes per item. When you have reached the two and a half minute mark, you'll hear an audible notice. If you're still testifying when the notice sounds, please complete your testimony within the remaining minute. When testifying, we ask that you state your full name for the record, anonymous testimony is also accepted. Decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Uh, breaching decorum includes using the chat for anything other than indicating an interest in testifying. Violation of decorum may result in being removed from the chamber or the online meeting. You can also view the meeting on Akaku Channel fifty three, Facebook Live, at mauicounty.us/agendas. Thank you all for your cooperation. At this time, we're going to now ask Mr. Carnicelli to remain and so that Mr. Gabe could ask a question and any other council members. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Lawrence, good to see you.
Likewise.
Um, so I, I know you, you had uh, strong opinions on two point nine six, and I wanted to kind of get a little bit clarification on, in regards to, you know, the twenty five percent of the homes go to the market, or go to affordable and seventy five go to market. So we'll just start with like a hundred, a hundred unit project, just for argument's sake. So clarifying question is, um, the, the, when you said that twenty five percent of the homes, uh, or you, it's considered a kind of a tax, um, if, if those homes, as it stands now, this bill addresses that some of those homes, those twenty five percent homes will be turned out to market in five years, right? That's, that's how it is written now. We want to change that to make it longer so that some of those homes are prolonged in that pool of affordability. So we just don't have the inventory that allows us to um, to have the solution being, well, we'll just build another hundred units and then twenty five percent of those homes will go on and be unaffordable. So it seems like we, we can't like, keep up with the houses being flipped out, so you see what I'm saying? So my question is, wouldn't you consider, wouldn't you prefer to have like a protected pool of units so that our inventory can catch up? I know you're in the business of building more homes and building inventory, and wouldn't you agree we don't have the inventory right now? Isn't that the idea of having a longer deed restriction allows the, the, the units to catch up? Because as you see people leaving all the time? That's the question.
Um, if I understand your question, yes, we do not have enough inventory.
Right.
I mean, that is, we were conservatively five thousand homes short on August seventh.
Mm-hmm. That's right. So I, so a longer deed restriction, when you, just logically, doesn't that make it seem that we can protect those units from being flipped out so developers like you can catch up and build us more of those units that are affordable?
That sounds logical. It really does.
Thank you.
But the reality, but the reality in the marketplace is no.
Yeah.
Like, like in theory, that sounds great. And what I would say is if people come up to testify, I guess you should ask them if they're, if they're in favor of a longer deed restriction. And again, I'm not defending two point nine six, and I'm not saying that that is right. I'm just talking about the bill that's here. But if anybody that testifies in favor of this, I would ask them, do you own a home? And if they don't own a home, did you go through the class and get qualified? And are you ready to buy? And you're going to buy, you know, a workforce home, and you're in favor of a long deed restriction? So when we talk about the actual people that we're trying to build these for, let's see if they're actually in favor of this. That's, that's what I guess how I look at it.
I'm going to respond to that and I'll be done, Chair. Um, we did that door to door survey on Lani, and the number one thing they wanted was rent to own, right? And a rent to own model is, it, it sounds like that's wonderful because that's exactly what the people are wanting. Who are you asking, what do these folks want? They want rent to own model. So that's, that, I just wanted to respond to that and.
No, and, and if I could, is, is, I think that that's what we need to do. We need to have policy conversations like that. Like, how could we make rent to earn work?
Okay, we'll have policy conversations, and we can do it at a different time. So hold on to that thought, Mr. Carnicelli.
Okay.
And you too, Mr. Johnson, because you all should be in that discussion. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Carnicelli, members? Uh, member Senati, I can't see you, or a member, Lawrence Fernandez, do you have a question for Mr. Carnicelli? Okay, I don't hear them, so I think you're fine. Okay, thank you.
No questions.
Oh, Mr. Senati, was that you? No questions. Okay, thank you. Uh, Anna, our next testifier, please.
Yes, Chair, the next testifier is Sterling Higa to be followed by Katie Austin.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Hello, my name is Sterling Higa, and I live in Haiku with my wife and our four children. I'm testifying on behalf of Housing Hawaii's Future in opposition to both bills, so please allow me six minutes. I want to be clear, however noble your intentions, this is bad policy, period. Four things I want to talk about. First, the problem in Maui today is not that too many residential workforce housing units are being produced and flipped out of affordability. Let's look at some facts. The problem right now is nothing is being produced in Maui County. The State Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism released their quarter four twenty twenty three statistical and economic report. It's called a QSR, and you can access that online. That report indicates that last quarter only one hundred eighty nine units were permitted in Maui County. Now, that's permitted, not built, not construction starts, permitted, which means Maui County is on track this year to permit only eight hundred units, which would mean at the rate of eight hundred units a year, it would take three years to re-permit what was lost in Lahaina. Our problem is not that we are building too many of these units. Second, any increase in deed restrictions reduces the pool of potential buyers, and you can refer to everything that you heard from them or the previous testifier. But I want to explain briefly why. So it's simple. A home buyer is less likely to buy a deed restricted unit than an unrestricted unit. The longer the deed restriction, the less likely the person is to buy. Why? Because taking on debt is a risk. Home buyers are borrowing hundreds of thousands of dollars at seven percent interest, and they prefer the flexibility and the opportunity to build equity that comes with unrestricted units. For example, Las Vegas doesn't have deed restrictions, and that's why people from Maui County are leaving to buy property there. Fewer buyers means fewer projects because developers will not build housing if they can't sell that housing to buyers. So as clear as can be, right? The effect of this policy will mean fewer homes are built for local people, period. There is no other explanation.
You have three more minutes.
Thank you. Third, it would be irresponsible for this committee, Housing and Land Use, to pass this bill on to the full council without any assessment of its likely effects. Every expert you've talked to today, without exception, has told you this is a bad idea. You as council members are not a rubber stamp for your colleagues' first draft ideas. Take the time after this council meeting to read Noel Fujiioride's January twenty two article, January twenty twenty two article in Hawaii Business Magazine called, Here's How Affordable Housing Policies Have Impacted Hawaii's Housing Supply: Learn More About Deed Restrictions Before Taking Action Like This. And last, it is a waste of this council's time, and it's a waste of the public's time when policies like this are proposed and considered without any effort to consult relevant experts or county staff in advance. I count twelve county employees in this room, plus the dozens that are watching from the other side of that wall, plus the dozens that are watching on the seven floors below us. Add in the prep time, add in the follow-up, and that's thousands of taxpayer dollars wasted. So this council could get a two hour class on why this is a bad idea. But worse than the monetary cost is the time lost. This council could have been reforming Title nineteen zoning to make housing affordable by design. This council could have been making permitting faster to speed the rebuilding of housing for displaced families. This council could have been doing literally anything. But instead, you had three people who took time off from their jobs putting people in homes to come here and tell you that this is a bad idea. You had overworked county staff who are already stretched thin from having to rebuild Lahaina come here to tell you why this is a bad idea. We could have done that via email. As an aside, I have been patient and polite, but I am beginning to understand why so many people are angry with this government. We need council members to come correct. Don't waste our time with your first draft ideas. Come with facts, come with supporters, pass the change that the people of Maui need. This chamber is the people's house. This building belongs to the people of Maui County.
One minute.
These bills are not the people's work. Thank you.
Members, do you have any questions for Mr. Higa? Seeing how as there is no questions, thank you so much for being here, sir. Anna?
Chair, the next testifier is now reconnected to the meeting. It's Autumn Ness, then to be followed by Katie Austin. Thank you.
Um, aloha, council. Um, interesting that I should follow that testimony. Um, I am testifying right now, not as a mem, not as a member of Councilmember Johnson's staff, but as someone who's been working on housing since, um, I worked for Member Cochran in twenty sixteen. Um, she really like tasked me in twenty, she gave me like, was like, hey, take all the time you need and study. Go look at how other communities across the country have pulled themselves out of this mess. And that's what I did. I spent years just studying other communities and talking with them. I read an article um, in the very beginning called Build and Let Live Forty Years of Affordable Housing in Aspen, and a quote um, that was in that report has lived with me since then. And the quote is, "We totally invented the concept of a dual market, a second, more affordable pool of housing that would be traded among local residents and that would be insulated from market forces." To me, since I read that, that has been the goal for Maui, because we're always going to have these outside volatile market forces. When I talked to the lead, the head of Aspen Pitkin Housing Authority on the phone, over months, we had this, this really good relationship. And when she heard that we have a five, eight, ten deed restriction, year or deed restriction, she literally almost fell off her chair. She was like, you're never going to build an inventory of affordable units, and you will never solve this problem until you have longer term affordability. will never solve this problem until you have longer term affordability. The National Low Income Housing Coalition advocates for the need to preserve existing units, pointing to research that indicates it costs 40% less to preserve an existing affordable unit than it does to build a new one. Um, 30-year deed restrictions are standard in communities across the United States who have successfully built longstanding affordable housing programs, pulled themselves out of the situation that we're in right now. Regarding building equity, um, people can refinance their home. They can, just like a regular home, except the value that they use is the affordable value. It's commensurate with what they put into the house. Pay $400,000 for a house, you have $400,000 of house to do all the things that a regular homeowner does with. You can't buy a $400,000 house and have $900,000 of equity. That's just fair, right? To the term, to the point that longer deed restrictions make the house harder to spell, sell, especially in the upper AMI categories and especially for multifamily units, some of that is because until recently, upper AMI affordable units were just about the same price as market rate units, first of all. So why would somebody who can almost afford a market rate unit go for the deed restriction if they just wait a little longer and add into a market rate unit, right? Now that the cost of market rate and affordable units are, is so much different because of legislation passed over the last couple of years, longer deed restrictions make more sense. The affordable buyer gets $100,000 or $200,000 off the price of a house, can get into a house that they never would be able to afford previously or anytime, right? Um, in exchange for a reasonable deed restriction.
Three minutes.
Okay, um, I guess I'll, I'll finish then. But the last thing I'll say is we have to normalize it. We have to normalize. Go ahead, sorry.
You can have three more minutes to testify.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. In communities where there's a real difference between affordable prices and market rate prices, deed restrictions don't make the unit undesirable. It's just the way things are. Like plenty of counties, if you want to buy an affordable unit and get $200,000 off the cost of your home, a deed restriction is what you sign up for, especially in a market like Maui where your other option is to move off island. Like if that's your option, take the deed restriction or move off island? A lot of folks, you know, I'm hearing from people that some folks chose to move off island, a lot of folks won't. Um, the, the last point I'll say is that point becomes even more true if it's normalized. If it's across the board, if you're going to get into an affordable home and buyers know what they're getting into, it's not a surprise when they sign up, um, that a 15 or 20-year deed restriction and they understand what that means. Not that you can't build equity. People think that they can't build equity in a home with a deed restriction. That's not the case. You can absolutely refinance your home. You can absolutely do whatever you want to do, just like a regular homeowner, but they have to be educated to know that. It sounds scary right now that like you're never going to make a penny off your home. Yeah, so that's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Members, questions for the testifier? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Can we make Autumn Ness a resource person if she's available based on her expertise in this subject?
Members?
Objections?
Okay. Ms. Ness, are you able to stay with us?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Next testifier?
Yes, Chair, the next testifier is Katie Austin to be followed by Riley Bond.
Aloha, uh, my name is Katie Austin. Um, I am testifying in support of Bill 12 for extending deed restrictions. Uh, the need to keep, uh, our affordability for housing is needed now more than ever. Uh, to extend the deed restrictions would prevent the flipping of homes for profit and keep the housing market more in range for affordability. Uh, in all due respect to the person who spoke on the project in Honolulu, I do believe that Maui is in a completely different position. Um, I'm also in support of Bill 74 restarting the clock if sold before the deed restriction ends. It would ensure that a home stays within the affordability range for longer to build, um, that kind of, um, backing that we've seen that we don't have for our housing market. I do agree with what Adam spoke on Kauai, uh, his stance that he's not here to build wealth for people, that he's here to get people into affordable housing. And I think that's something very key we need to think of on Maui, especially in everything that has happened. Um, I also found what Adam, uh, what Autumn said to be noted that 30-year deed restrictions are very standard in communities across the U.S. who have successfully done this. And I think that we need to look at those models and kind of go off of that as well. So also, the National Low Income Housing Coalition advocates for the need to preserve these existing units, do, does point to research that indicates that it costs 40% less to preserve existing affordable units than to build new ones. And I think that that's especially, especially important, uh, knowing on West Maui that we do have a sustainability aspect and we just can't keep building and building and building, especially due to the fact that our county only, county only has access to 23% of our water currently on the west side. So it's not like we can just keep putting up housing after housing after housing project. Uh, Las Vegas is also not comparable to, uh, what we're dealing with on Maui. They do have unlimited acreage and it's not comparable in terms of water use. Um, to the man that did ask if I were in a position to buy, if I would support longer deed restrictions, and I think that's absolutely, the answer is yes, as well as many people I have talked to as well. Uh, I'm not trying to buy for a short 10-year, uh, term and then, I'm almost done, for a 10-year term and then flip it for profit. I am trying to buy to be able to stay here affordably in the long run. Um, I would recommend maybe a compromise to stay at current, um, time restrictions for multifamily homes, but you could double for single-family homes since they are more desirable if the council sees a need for that as well. So mahalo.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Staff?
Chair, the next testifier is Riley Bond to be followed by Jordan Rudias. Riley is unmuted on our end chair.
Hi there. Um, hi there, I'm Riley Bond. I am, uh, testifying in support of, um, both bills. And I just want to test, uh, or talk a little bit about, um, data collection and talk, test on the first two presentations that were given. And just to kind of like, uh, keep in mind, as, as been stated since then, is that we want to be, keeping in mind the people who will be purchasing these. And the people who gave the presentations are real estate agents who have a vested interest, obviously, in, that's their career, that's how they make a, a living, a profit. And we're not talking, you know, they're not talking to normal people. Like that, that presentation was absolute jargon, full of random numbers and, and acronyms that to the average person, to the average first-time home buyer, just dipping their toes in the water who eventually wants to own something for a long time and eventually wants to leave something to their kids. It was just went, it was just not, um, it was, didn't explain the, the issue in a way that is sustainable and is, um, keeping in mind the humanity and the preservation of community. It was like, has been said to, to build equity and for profit. And we don't have the resources to sustain that. And, and, you know, words that have been thrown around, attracting developers, attracting developers. We need to attract our people, our people back home, you know? And so it's just, I feel that we need to be careful, the sources of the data that we're looking for and collecting. And even some of the other people that, oh, you know, we, we went out and collected our own data, talking to specific people within their realm of connection that will give them the information they want to support, you know, the, the area that they're speaking on. Um, so that's what I have to say. Thank you all for being here and for your time on, uh, dealing with these issues.
You. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you. Staff?
Chair, the next testifier is Jordan Rudias to be followed by Kai Nishiki. Apologies, Chair, it appears Jordan has dropped from the meeting. The next testifier is Kai Nishiki.
Hi, good morning, Chair, committee members.
Good morning.
Oh, Chair, um, I think Jordan is on, um, but I don't know who you want to have first.
Okay, let's go Kai and then we'll have Jordan?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, sorry, I, um, lost connection there for a second. Am I testifying or am I waiting?
You are testifying.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I wanted to, uh, Kai Nishiki testifying on my own behalf. I wanted to share, uh, the experience of my niece who, um, did apply at Hale Kaiola. And, um, I want to just, you know, just share, uh, our experience because I did, um, try to help her, uh, through that application process. Uh, the only, um, homes, uh, that I'm aware that were, uh, challenged, um, to sell were the above moderate homes. And there were just a few, just a few left. And that above, um, market price, uh, was, uh, very, very close to, uh, market rate. And, um, the, one of the issues that I need to raise is that this project, um, was built right before reduce or which has the ability to reduce the sale price guidelines. And so, you know, if, if the, um, prices had been lower and the, uh, the other challenge was interest rates went up, um, you know, double and triple, uh, when she was trying to qualify for this. And so, you know, really the only, um, problem was that the price was too high, close to market and the interest rate. Um, otherwise there, there, you know, there was no problem, um, getting folks' interest in the lower-priced home. So it, it actually illustrates perfectly that Bill 107, um, is a solution to bringing that price down to where people can actually qualify. And you then incentivize our local people like my niece, um, who is, who is a professional, um, you know, works, works, uh, you know, in the dental, um, industry. So, you know, like she has a, a good paying job. So, um, just wanted to address those things. Um, and that's on my first three minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also, in, in addressing the barriers for builders, um, you know, they are also facing the, the higher interest rates and also that the county and state put responsibility for, um, for infrastructure development onto builders. So these are, these are things that, that this county council, um, has addressed. And there is also opportunities to provide low-interest loans to builders of affordable housing. And the county and state can subsidize, uh, infrastructure. And these things, um, will stimulate the, the, the interest and growth in affordable housing development. So I do not believe, um, that, you know, builders are just running away for, because there's deed restrictions and sell and, you know, people aren't, are running away because of deed restrictions. The whole picture is not being presented here. And so that is, um, you know, something that is important. I'm glad that they did talk about the interest rates, uh, and, but there are other factors, um, as well. There absolutely needs to be, um, an affordable pool of housing that is, one, sold to local, uh, local families and prioritizing by length of residency. That's why Bill 107 and 111 are so vital. And now is the time for our county council to now protect, uh, that, that inventory for, for longer periods. And so we've never had access, um, to all of these tools. So, you know, let's, let's use the tools that, that have been, that are setting this foundation for, for building this pool of affordable homes. And, and let's not right now, like, try to, you know, cut off the legs of protecting that, that affordability. Um, we, we have the funding in place, we have the bills in place, we have builders who, who are willing to build and, you know, it, let's put this out there. There are, there are builders in West Maui who are agreeing to build 100% affordable projects with, with deed restrictions in perpetuity, not 10 years, not 20 years, forever they can stay affordable. So, uh, we need to, um, push back on this narrative that this, um, this is impossible and this is going to get in the way. We have builders in West Maui right now in perpetuity. So it can be done. Uh, let's, let, let's not talk, you know, Billy Canoy, let, let, when someone tells you no can, can, let's do it.
Thank you. Um, Member Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I have a clarifying question for you, Ms. Nishiki. Um, you broke up it when you're in your testimony. Um, and I think you said that the presenters were going off of old data after the Affordable Sales Price Guidelines and, uh, Bill 107 had passed. Is that correct?
Uh, what, what I said is that, uh, Hale Kaiola, um, was built prior to, uh, Bill 107 and Bill 111's passage. And so, um, they didn't take advantage of, uh, ga, gaining public, um, subsidy to bring the prices down to what, uh, our people can afford, uh, which was Bill 107, I believe. And so, uh, projects, um, moving forward will, will have, and, you know, perhaps if they're still having problems, they could, they could come back and ask the county to, you know, subsidize the price down so that, uh, our people can afford it.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions, members? Seeing none. Chair, um, staff?
Chair, the next testifier is Jordan Rudias to be followed by Deandre Makakoah.
Aloha. Good morning, county council members and Chair, um, testifying from our fishing for housing occupation down on Kauta Poli Beach. We are now Day 75 fighting for housing for the fire displaced victims. I want to express my strong support for Bill 12, which extends deed restrictions, and Bill 74, which restarts the clock if a property is sold before the deed restriction ends. The pressing housing crisis in Maui County is exacerbated by the recent fires displacing thousands of more residents, as we all know. Our decision to sell our family home of over 20 years in late 2021 highlighted the urgency of preserving housing affordability. Within 24 hours of listing, bids from outside buyers flooded in, threatening to disrupt the local housing market. Extending deed restrictions is crucial in preventing the exploitation of our housing market and, market for profit. It serves as a vital step in ensuring that homes remain within an affordable range, especially in the face of external demand. Maui's attractiveness has drawn outside buyers eager, eager to capitalize on our desirable properties. And it's imperative to safeguard our community's housing from being scooped up by those seeking profit over local well-being. I'm also in support of Bill 74, as restarting the clock when a property is sold prematurely before the deed restriction ends will, uh, will contribute significantly to the long-term affordability of homes. This measure aligns with the goal of preserving housing accessibility for the benefit of current and future Maui residents. Additionally, some have raised the point that longer deed restrictions may make homes seem harder to sell, especially in the upper AMI categories. However, the trade-off makes sense as the cost of affordable homes decreases, making them more desirable to local buyers and preventing the influx of outside buyers solely seeking profit. I urge you to consider the profound impact these bills can have on our community's well-being. Adam has already stated that this has worked on Kauai, which is way more like Maui than Oahu, so we need to do it and let it become more normal. By supporting Bill 12 and 74, we take a crucial step toward maintaining Maui as a place where families can afford to live and thrive. Mahalo.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you. Staff?
Chair, the next testifier is Deandre Makakoah to be followed by Carlos Lamas. Jordan, if you're available? Chair, we can try to come back to Jordan.
Okay, we'll go on to the next one.
The next testifier is Deandre Makakoah.
Hi, aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Aloha, my name is Deandre Makakoah. Um, I'm testifying in strong support of, uh, Tamara Polton's proposed. Um, just want to put some things into perspective. Um, we have a different culture here on Maui and especially in Lahaina. You know, multi-generational families and multi-generational living was very, very prevalent in our communities. And that shows that people are willing to live in a home for well over 10, 20 years. for well over 10, 20 years. You know what I mean? I was living in a house that was five generations old. That was well before I was born, over 30 years ago. So with that in mind and studies, you just do a little bit of research. There's studies by Bankrate and the National Association of Realtors showing that younger generations are increasingly getting involved in the housing market and they're willing to take risks. And people that move into deed restricted homes move, buy and sell at the same rate as people who buy open market homes. So that, that people are willing to take that risk regardless just to get into the market. So to have that diverse option available for all types of families, income levels and situations is completely necessary and I strongly support. And that's all I have to say. Mahalo.
Thank you. Member, yes, um, you have a question from Member Uwahans.
Aloha. Thank you so much for your testimony. Um, I'm wondering if you could share where you got that information about the young people wanting to invest in the housing market? I would love to look into that more. Could you provide where you found that information?
Yes, here. A Bankrate survey shows that younger generations are willing to make sacrifices to become homeowners implying a potential openness towards deed restricted, uh, properties. So did I, how do I?
Bankrate survey?
I can, I can paste that in the chat. I can paste the source.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph? The next testifier is Carlos Lamas, to be followed by Junya Nakoa.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, so I'm testifying in support of Bill 12 and 74. Um, you know, longer deed restrictions in maintaining the affordability of homes. Uh, longer deed restrictions act as a deterrent to outside investors looking to purchase affordable homes only to flip them for profit. This flipping often inflates prices, making it challenging for the local community to afford homes in their own neighborhoods. Implementing and enforcing these longer deed restrictions, the local government and housing authorities can play a crucial role in preserving the affordability of these homes. This approach ensures that affordable homes remains accessible to the local residents who might otherwise be priced out of the market due to the actions of external investors. It's about protecting the community's fabric and ensuring that the local population, particularly those with limited financial means, have a fair chance at home ownership in the areas that they have long called home. The emphasis on keeping affordable homes with the reach of the local community, uh, not only supports economic stability, but also fosters a sense of community and belonging among the residents. That's really I had, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Steph?
Chair, the next testifier is Junya Nakoa, to be followed by Tom Crowley.
Hey, how's it? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? All right. Sure. Sorry. Just muck I cleaning my, uh, muck I, knows where the shit muck I. Okay, hold on, hold, hold on, hold on. Okay, um, okay, um, yeah, where the hell it was? Okay, first thing first. This is the first bill, yeah, for the deed restriction. You know, I've been on the Hawaiian Home List for over 25 years. So you talk about, uh, deed restrictions. That's something that is, uh, you know, most strictest deed restriction, yeah, and all that stuff. And you choke people on that list. So you cannot tell me no more people on that list and all that stuff that they will deter people for applying for, um, deed restrictions. So choke that bugger in the toilet. Okay, where will I talk about that kind of stuff? Yeah, deed restrictions is not the problem. Yeah, it's a problem. Yeah, so no, so no, try and blame this deed restriction thing because, because to check on my house, my house ready for fall apart. Let me turn this bugger around. I don't know how to turn around, shit. Well, my house is ready for fall apart. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I just put one, put one, uh, tarp on top. It's 75. Yeah, and so to say that we, we the client, and this is my mother's house, yeah. I am still a first time buyer. And if the question that the brother one asked about first time buyers, um, would love to go do the deed restriction, heck yeah, I like do the deed restriction. I don't like nobody move. I'm not gonna move. I'll be my, I like my kids when they start giving me kids, um, be able to have their kids stay inside the house. Yeah, about decisions with the two guys in the beginning was talking all the kind of crap about, uh, people that not like them, not like the deed restrictions. We like the deed restrictions. And to talk about developers running away because of that. Good, tell those buggers, tell those buggers run away. Tell them get the heck out of here. We don't need those guys, oh yeah. Because throughout this whole, um, the, uh, fire, we finding a lot of local brothers and sisters who like step up and build these homes here in Lahaina and here on Maui. Yeah, and we, 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 we like the deed restrictions. So mahalo Tamara Polton for standing strong for us and listening to the people. Yeah, not only the two guys. Yeah, and, um, you know, all the guys who gotta work for good or kind or bring up your solution, yes, sir, make them work. And so like I said, uh, I frustrated, I frustrated with the, the administration and for making all of these permitting process kind of stuff. Because we, the local people, we ready for build. We ready for build. And we go and make deed restrictions on. The DHL to make the deed restrictions, we can do the same team, team too. Okay, so us guys, we, uh, what else I like to talk about? What else I talk about? Oh yeah, and the reason why planning people is because the banks. Yeah, you're saying something about the banks. They let us use our own banks. So we build the, the, we build reputation with them and relationship with them. I bet you they give me my money. No, no, go to the developer's banks. That's the reason why. That's the reason why. Yeah, frustrated, but just like it's autumn enough and working on this forever. And then, she's a car. Hey, Sarah, what you doing in Lahaina? Because you guys kept on listening to these experts. The experts that screwing us up. Come listen to the people. Never mind experts, never mind government, the people of Lahaina. Listen to us. We don't fool around. We know what we're talking about. Yeah, that's bugga, but I smoke kind of educated, yeah? So just want to tell you guys a question with this whole, um, housing part teams here in Lahaina. Yeah, so I want to tell you guys, the people of Lahaina, the experts, the people of Maui, the people of Hawaii. We the experts, not listen to the other guys. They fuck psychology for nothing and all that kind of stuff. And I like get educated, yeah, to one of the council people who thinking of Hawaii, not like get educated. Yeah, tell you guys right now, frustrated. We ready, we ready. We like, we do the kind, like, support this, so support the two bills. Yeah, but we call hard on it. And guys, we here forever. I support these deed restrictions, everybody. One of the council members that talk about, uh, these deed restrictions about our, our, our family and all that. I stay in one right here, my house, my mother's house. This bugger, this, uh, that, yeah, actually like 10 years ago. But yeah, so. We say dude, my brother going home, I'll be nothing boy for life. But yeah, so, uh, I support these deed restrictions. Okay, mahalo. You guys have a good one. Uh, can't find it, I'll go back clean yard. Shoot.
Okay, members, questions for Mr. Nakoa? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Steph?
Chair, last testifier currently signed up is Tom Crowley. If you would like to testify, please let stop now in the chat or in the council chamber. Thank you. Tom Crowley, you can begin your testimony.
Aloha, committee. Tom Crowley testifying on my own behalf. Um, I was prompted to, uh, to want to testify after listening to the lenders and the, uh, and the real estate agents. Because it occurred to me, the issue is not how long, uh, the, um, uh, property is held in, in affordable. The issue that you have right now, what's wrong with the system right now, is the shared appreciation model that you're using. The shared appreciation model that you have in place that says the purchaser is only going to get 25% of the appreciation of the property means that the other side, which is the county or the developer, uh, if you will, who has, who has reduced the, the, the cost of it, is going to get 75% of the appreciation model. So let me give you an example. Let's say a property would, would sell for a million dollars, but through either the county put it developer reducing the price down to $750,000. The person buys it for 750, okay? Now, let's say in 10 years, it doubles in value. So now it's worth $2 million on the open market. The, the person who put out the $750,000, the buyer, is only going to get 25% of that appreciation. So, so his net, when he sells it, is only going to be 1 million, uh, against his 750 that he put in. Whereas the subsidy now has grown to $1 million subsidy. And there's the problem is that the person says, no, I can't give away all of that equity that, that, that I would have gained over the, over the last 10 years of owning the property to the subsidy side. So one of the, uh, the lender people said that FHA's model says it can't go beyond 50%. And I think that's more than reasonable, you know, limiting the, the, um, uh, the, the gained 50%. But what I think it should be is it should, it should reflect how much money, uh, uh, that was put into the home. For example, for my example, the owner put $750,000 into a valued home of, of $1 million. He has 75% in, into it. So he should get 75% of any, uh, equity gain down the road. The subsidy was 25%. That subsidy should continue at 25% down the road. So the percentage would stay the same, the values would, would, would grow. So, uh, for example, in, in what I just gave you, the, down the road, if the value of that million dollar house doubled, it would sell on the, on the, um, uh, the, um, affordable market for 1.5 million instead of 2 million. Whereas in your model, it's going to sell on the affordable market for 1 million instead of 2 million. So the person in the affordable market is going to gain a, a million dollar equity right there. So it's not how long you hold it in. It's that it should be fair, the appreciation that, that, that the buyer would get. I hope that's clear. I could make it more clear with, with illustrations and so forth. But there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Crowley, you have a question from Member Polton and Member Johnson.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, as always, for your testimony. Um, my question is, or clarifying question is, you know, when you said that that subsidy is then going to the developer or the government? And I agree that there's better equity models out there than the one we have. Um, you know, maybe Nahale or some other one. But, um, I didn't understand what you said, that the subsidy is going to the government or the developer. Isn't the subsidy being paid forward to the next home buyer so that instead of then buying a $2 million affordable home, which is a big oxymoron?
It doesn't sound affordable.
They're, they're getting, you know, a million dollar affordable home, which isn't really affordable either. But I, I just was clarifying when you said the subsidy goes to the government or the developer, doesn't it go to the next affordable home buyer? Not that I'm saying that this equity model is, is, you know, that wasn't really, I don't think I changed it or anything.
But my wording, yeah.
I get it. Um, so when I say it's going to, it's not really going to the developer because developer basically puts it out there. They never get anything back. They're gone, okay? But it is the, the, um, government now who essentially is saying, we're managing this program. And in managing this program, we're going to sell you a $2 million house for $1 million. So, so the government's interest, if you will, in that home is that $1 million. That's how I'm looking at it. Um, so that's why I say that the appreciation is, is being realized by the government program more than it's being realized by the purchaser of the home. And that's why, as the models that, that the, um, um, the real estate agent and, uh, and, and.
And to clarify, when you say the purchaser of the home, you mean the original purchaser and not a second, the purchaser of an affordable housing?
Right, and, and, and I agree with you that if it's affordable house, we want to keep it in the affordable range. We don't want it, you know, in some way, either timing out or whatever. But, but the reason why they want to time it out is they're saying, I want to get my appreciation. And the model that you have of only 25% is not enough appreciation. So at least make it 50. But I think it should be reflective of how much that person put in against what the full value of, of the home they're buying is.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't disagree, but I didn't work on that. I, I was just breaking it down.
Yeah, yeah, something new to think about.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, that was a similar question I had for you, Mr. Crowley. I appreciate your testimony. But I do want to clarify, you, you basically said that the shared appreciation model as it stands now is part of the problem. Would you agree or do you disagree with that fact that, you know, just being a renter, there's so many other things that renters are concerned with in addition to that? It's like, you know, I have a landlord, they might raise my rent. I might, you know, there's evictions going on. There's, there's, um, the permission to do anything to your own house and just, you know, refinance, you can't refinance, refinance if you're renting. So isn't there more things on the table that people factor into their decision?
I, I guess you're saying if someone's making the jump from being a renter to being an owner of an affordable property, isn't it a better deal for him to become the owner of an affordable property? Not always, no. Because the renter can always walk away from his current rental at any time. He can't walk away from this commitment, this lifetime commitment that he's making in, in, uh, purchasing the home. So no, that, I wouldn't agree in.
Okay, in. I would, I would see your point. But right now, as a, as a renter myself, I am deathly afraid of, one point, my landlord saying, okay, I'm done. And then where do I go? And there's so many people who previous to the fire were of that situation and now post-fire, it's a very tight rental market. So that's, that's what I was, uh, you know, that for me, I wish.
Well, I, I would agree, I would agree with you 100% that we have a rental market that is unsustainable right now at all. But, but I don't think you're going to get enough people out of the rental market through, through an affordable housing program, uh, to fix that. Maybe, maybe you'll get enough people into affordable rentals in the rental market, which is a whole nother program, okay? But when we talk about this program where someone, it would become a home buyer and, and we're saying those people shouldn't be competing with the rest of the open market, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm, I'm in full agreement. Let's make that good. And it would be great if you, we could actually, uh, uh, make the prices half of what the market value would be. But in order to make the prices half of what the market value would be, we have to find subsidies somewhere other than just asking the developer to come up with that, right? So.
Okay, thanks for your clarifying question. Thank, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Steph?
Chair, the next testifier is Johan Law, to be followed by Albert Perez. And our last testifier is Rose C.
Aloha, um, this is Johan Law testifying on my own behalf. Um, so I, uh, and this is on both items. Um, and I'm in support of these bills. And I just want to share my experience. So my mom and I bought our condo at the end of 2020 for about $380,000. And our condo is now worth like 600 grand almost. So that's a massive amount of appreciation. And it's great for us, right? Because it gives us a lot of options, like I was able to refinance and, um, pay off credit cards, stuff like that. And so, um, I think that 25% appreciation makes sense because that would allow you to, like, if you, if you buy a house or a condo with a, with a really small down payment, you can then refinance later and you can get rid of your, your mortgage insurance, uh, maybe get a better rate, stuff like that. So I'm in, in support of that. And then the restriction periods, it seems like they could actually be forever. Like they could be indefinite, right? Because you're still getting that 25%. Um, but I think the, the ones in the, the terms in the bill are, are a big improvement, so I'm in support. Um, and so, like I said, the value has gone way up for everyone. But that value only. But that value only, you know, aside from refinancing, stuff like that, it only benefits you if you sell. And if I sell where I live or where my condo is in Kehe Shores, I know who's going to buy that unit. It's going to be an investor who is maybe there two weeks out of the year, which has happened. A lot of the units have been sold. And when I testified on the previous bill, I think I said something to that effect. And now it's way worse. Like, a lot of residents are gone. So, I mean, you know, appreciation is one thing. Building equity is good. But then we need neighbors to have a community. And when you lose all your neighbors, you know, that impacts, you know, especially for older people. You know, if you're living in a place for the rest of your life and then you see people leave and then you're left with no friends, like, that's not very nice. That's awful. And we're seeing all of our communities across Hawaii, but especially Maui, being hollowed out basically. And it's not, it's not good. It's not sustainable. And I think the trade-off is worth it. Mahalo.
Thank you. Questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Steph?
Chair, our next testifier is Albert Perez to be followed by our last testifier, Rose C.
Good morning, Chair, council members. Can you folks hear me? Good morning. I wasn't dying to testify. I was just wanting to listen this morning. But I heard a lot of things. I think that some of our experts that gave the presentations are only familiar with our current system. And they're very familiar with that. I'm sure that there are some problems with it. But as you know, it creates temporarily affordable housing. That's what our workforce housing policy does. And then that housing is put on the open market for sale to a virtually unlimited number of wealthy offshore investors. It doesn't work to create a permanent pool of affordable housing. I'm not opposed to the idea of increasing the length of the deed restriction. And we heard that on Kauai, there were no problems selling homes with that length of a deed restriction. But I think the key is to make the deed restriction voluntary for the purchaser, to make it permanent, and for the county to offer people money upfront in exchange for that deed restriction. I'm pretty sure this is similar to what Autumn Ness was talking about. I'm not that familiar with Aspen, what they do. But I have been studying in the city of Crested Butte, Colorado. I've mentioned this before to you folks. The local housing authority gives people an average of 15% of the cost of the home upfront. People who want a roof over their heads are happy to sign up. This can help the many people who are just being held back by the lack of a down payment. This type of program can also be used to buy existing homes. In that city, Crested Butte, 25% of the town's housing stock is deed restricted permanently for local residents who work in the area and is not available to outside investors who don't. The other 75% is still available at market rates. And this allows local people to stay. So those are my comments. Mahalo.
Mr. Perez? Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Steph?
Yes, Chair. Question for Albert.
Oh, okay. Mr. Perez? Mrs. Sinense has a question for you.
Hello, Mr. Perez, for your testimony this morning. You mentioned the option of taking the subsidy with the deed restriction. Is that what you, can you expand on that?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I think maybe what you're getting at is that in Crested Butte, they're part of, they're within this place that's part of a housing authority called Gunison Valley. And that, that system is that they give people the money upfront to help purchase the home. About 15%.
Okay, because you said that buyers could opt in to the deed restriction and take the government subsidy or not. But it sounds like the project has been subsidized with all of the different building exemptions. So the entire project has received government subsidies. So if you wanted to buy the property at market rates, you would be paying back the subsidy? Is that what you meant?
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't talking about that. There's a whole range of things that they do. And some of it applies to rental housing. And I think that it would be of us to check it out. I'm expecting that Autumn, who studied this for longer than I have, is going to be able to answer some more of your questions.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Palton has a question for you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Perez, for your testimony. I was wondering if you can clarify for me what you're seeing, if that's much different than the county's existing first-time home buyers down payment assistance program?
I think there are some similarities because essentially it is a mortgage assistance program. But it's in exchange for a permanent deed restriction. I think that's the difference.
Okay, so what you're saying, what the county does is they just give out this first-time home buyers down payment assistance program for those who qualify by lottery. And it's like a grant that we never see again. But the difference between what you're seeing is it would be in exchange for a deed restriction and maybe that down payment assistance in exchange for a deed restriction should be higher than what it currently is.
I'm not recommending a particular amount. But yeah, it's about 15% in this city that I've been studying. And I think what you're doing is investing in creating the permanent pool of affordable housing for the people who are willing to accept those deed restrictions.
About it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as there are no more questions. Steph?
The last person currently signed up to testify is Rose C. on Blue Jeans.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning. I too was watching, kind of learned about this last minute. And I'm actually, I'm glad I'm last because I got to hear everybody's point of views. I'm not really for or against, but I'm actually more for Bill 12 in passing only because of this. Because I've lived through both sides. I am a current homeowner who was part of workforce housing. And I was able to get in through lottery. So I live in Kaioulu, the Kaioulu community above Roy's, if you guys know, in Lahaina. I also am a, what's the word? But daughter of a family who purchased a home that was within a 20-year deed restriction at the time. So I don't know if you guys know where Leo Leo and Aulike is in Lahaina, which is, I don't know longer now. But it's when you first enter Lahaina, that was a lottery as well. So the only reason to why I am for this bill, and trust me, I've been weighing out the pros and cons on both sides and debating if I should even talk. But I'm here to share my manao and my experiences as to why I am for this bill. Like a few have said before me, you know, the logistics and everything, okay, makes sense. And a lot of people are here for the people in regards to long-term and making sure they get their fair equity and whatnot. But I can tell you this. If it wasn't for my ohana planting their roots in Lahaina for the past 25, my mom lived in that house for 25, maybe a little over 25 years before making the move of selling and moving off island. But if it wasn't for my ohana making that move, it would have never gave me perspective and the goals and ambitions to purchase my own home. Now, I got lucky in being able to be involved in this lottery, which honestly, I don't think a lot of people knew about. But I can tell you that if the deed restriction was a little bit higher, I still would have bought because I still would have wanted to own a home regardless. Because renting, I don't see any money. At least if I bought, I would see something back. I was a high advocate of Nahali'oh Maui, but surprisingly, I did not qualify. So I had to look elsewhere. And then I almost did not qualify for this workforce housing, which is crazy to me because we, my husband actually had to have a third job just to save a down payment, which was $30,000 within two years. His third job did that for us. And that's what allowed us to qualify because we also had to pay somebody else's mortgage on top of trying to save for a down payment. So with that being said, I think this bill is going into play because a lot of people want to put in their roots to Lahaina, to Maui, in fact. I mean, it doesn't even have to be Lahaina. But I think that's where the bill wraps in is because there are people willing to lay down their roots and not have to worry about equity or whatever because they're willing to take that sacrifice in order to benefit their family in the long run. That's all.
Thank you. Steph? Chair, the next.
Oh, I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Palton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Freyten, for your testimony. I just wanted to clarify when you said the Kaioulu project, plenty of our Kaioulu projects that we are having right now are multifamily. And I just wanted to clarify that the affordable housing project that you're in is not multifamily.
Sorry, what do you, you mean like multifamily into? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Oh, yeah. Multifamily, single-family home. Multifamily would be like one building with plenty residences inside it. And single-family would be one house on one lot.
Yeah, we are single-family. Yeah, so.
What, did you have a deed restriction on your house?
We do. We have tenure. We have a tenure deed restriction. So, which is totally fine. We understood that going in. I think at this point in time and when we were ready to buy, we didn't see that, you know, at one point, we thought 425,000 was a lot. And so we finally were like, we got to pull the trigger. We got to do it if we want to stay on Maui. And so we did. We pulled the trigger. And we were lucky that we even qualified because apparently we made too much, which just baffles me and where their numbers even come from. Because I would love to have, I would love my husband to have just one job. He still currently works too, just to make ends meet and to make sure we can live decently. And I'm saying that because we don't turn on the AC still because we don't want to run electric. You know, like, we don't, we don't live a luxurious lifestyle like everybody, like, most people do. We just, we try to make, make sure we're good. Make sure we're even. And yeah, I think for those who want to.
How much are you into that deed restriction?
Right now, we're at four. We're about four. We moved in at the end of 2019, which was a blessing right before COVID.
You envision a lot of people in that community flipping the house? When it?
To be honest, yeah. There's actually already a few people I question in our community as to what their intentions are. Because I do know of a lot of people that were on the waiting list. But from my understanding, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a loophole where once you qualify for affordable workforce housing, if that person no longer qualifies at the time of the final qualification process, that house now goes back to market price? I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong. But, or maybe it's the developer's choice at that point. I'm not too sure. So, but there are a few people I question, only knowing that, I know there was a few people that inquired with me and I sent them their, you know, same direction. So I just, I'm waiting for that 10 years to see who is the first one to sell because I know we're not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Any other members have questions? If not, Steph?
Chair, we did have one more person that signed up to testify. Their name is Manu Akana.
Yeah, hi. Good morning, everybody. Just like a couple of people, was just listening in. You know, I heard a lot of things and that was awesome. This bill, sorry, I never even read up on that much. So I honestly just came on here to ask a couple of questions that I never hear about yet and never talked about. But this is a 20-year you're asking for in the bill? To be a 20-year deed restriction?
10, 16, and 20. Just five, eight, and 10.
Okay. And then my other question was, in the deed restrictions, does that mean whatever year it is, that's how long it will be until you could use your equity? And all of that stuff as well?
I think what we want to do is accept your testimony. And then when the time comes for questions, allow one of the members of the council to ask the questions of our resources and hopefully get you that answer. But the idea is for you to testify and not for us to answer questions. So if that's okay, you can continue.
Yeah, okay, cool. I'm sorry about that. Next time, I'll come back with. Thanks for all your time and information. Mahalo.
Members, questions for our testifier? Miss, yes, Miss Candy Wallen-Trenantes. Questions for Mr. Akana?
Yes. Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, Mr. Akana. Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, quick question perhaps to help the testifier since he has a question. Perhaps sharing what your concern is regarding the question that you have. And then that way, we can better understand the purpose of your question. In, you're asking about the equity, about when equity can be accessed? If you can explain. Or if you can explain the purpose for you.
Yeah, I was just, no, I mean, I was just wondering like, because I'm a, I could be a first-time home buyer and I was looking to buy a home and all of that stuff too right now. You know, to me, this whole deed restriction thing sounds like a make it or break it deal on buying a house and everything. And my concern would be like, in this deed restriction, would I have to wait that 8, 16, or 20-year in order to refinance if I had to? If I had to use that for something else? Just using the equity off of my house? Off of that?
Okay. Mahalo for sharing the purpose for your question. And then in deliberation, we can discuss that and then you'll get your answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ronan-Trenantes. Thank you, Mr. Akana. Steph?
Chair, it does appear as though we are done with the testifiers. If there's anybody in the council chamber or online. I see a testifier in the chamber.
Morning, Chair Kama. Aloha, Kaka Yaka Council. J.C. La Kulaoka. Aloha, everybody out there in Akaku land. We need, as everybody up country knows, we need workforce housing up country too. And I won't get into like the stuff with the churches and all. I was planning on saying about that. But you guys, a lot of testifiers. So believe it or not, I had a real estate license in Virginia one time. And I feel like I try to warn you guys all the time about like the mainland government and all that stuff. But you know a lot about that already. And so the average Joe on the street doesn't know like what you're talking about deed restrictions and all this stuff. They kind of see a hale in there and stuff. Yeah. So thanks for doing all this stuff, councilors. I know all you guys, almost said most of you guys, are trying to do the best thing for the people. And I would second, no one, tomorrow, Paulton, Bill, I would second this. My suggestion is that we need a true Hawaiian bank.
Members, do you have any questions for our testifier? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Steph?
Chair, that is our last person signed up to testify. If anyone would like to testify on Blue Jeans or in the council chamber, please let us know. let us know. We're going to give a brief countdown, three, two, one. Chair, it appears no one wishes to testify.
Thank you. Members, seeing as there are no more individuals wishing to testify without objection, I'd like to close all testimony for today's meeting. And as a reminder, a written testimony will always continue to be accepted into the record.
No objections.
Okay, so we're going to continue.
I have a question. Um, I thought the way the sunshine law was that you, are we taking up both two bills together?
Yes.
Oh, okay, got it.
So we're going to continue to discuss both items. I realize you have not had a break, I mean, a real break. You've had a lot of recesses, but I don't count them as a real break. So if you'd indulge me, uh, Member Paulton, and if you don't object, members, if we could stay maybe a little after 12, because I'd like to get some of your questions in and then maybe we can write the rest of them out and send it on, you know, to our resources, but they're here today. So, uh, Member Paulton, if you don't mind, I think we're going to run late and which means that you all are going to have a shoulder lunch break if that's okay with you all.
And then I'm, Chair, scheduled to leave to a meeting, Chair, so I'll be leaving shortly.
Okay, so we'll hopefully after the, so do you think maybe a seven-minute recess would be okay, everybody? So, okay, so HLU is going to recess, it is now 11:38, we're going to recess for seven minutes until 11:45 and we'll all come back and we get our resources back up here. Thank you. Recession. The HLU Committee of, uh, January 24th, 2024 will now reconvene. It is 11:52. I have just been told that Akaku has no Wi-Fi, therefore they will not be available to us. And I know before we took our supposedly seven-minute break, of which we are already, um, seven minutes behind, we almost like went 15 minutes. If it's okay, I'd like to be able to recess this meeting till February 7th and ask our wonderful resource people, all of them, if it's possible for them to come back.
February 7th at 9:00 AM, same?
The HLU meeting. Fine.
Chair.
No objections. Member, I got it. Okay, let's take Member Rollins Fernandez first and then Mr. uh, Finence. The two online first.
I just wanted to let you know that they are on Akaku. Channel 53 is on.
Yes. Is channel 53 on, Stacy? They just got on now.
No, no, I'm telling you.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm telling you that it's working.
Yep.
Okay, and you want to recess to which date, Chair?
February 7th, which is the, um, the HLU's next meeting. And we have other questions from other members. And so if you're done, can we go on to Mr. Senancy? Yes.
Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, some of my questions was for, uh, Mr. Roversi with, uh, Kauai County. And I was just wondering, Chair, if he could, maybe I wanted to see if there was any resources available that work with the Kauai County program? If, if that is, if we can request that of him, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Could we get that, um, Anna for Mr. Roversi? Okay, yes. Member Paulton, I think was next.
Uh, thank you, Chair. My question was regarding the recess. Um, it, it is okay to recess if, um, Blue Jeans sunset and then the next meeting will be not on the same link? That's okay, right?
I think the next one was scheduled to be on Blue, on, uh, Teams. Is that correct, Anna?
Yes, um, and thank you, Member Paulton. So we are trying to identify the Teams links that you can announce, Chair. Thank you.
Okay.
And we're seeing if we can just generally say Teams link and that is a fine enough announcement for the notice. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
And does, just to follow up, does that need to be clarified before we go out of this meeting? I, I don't know if you guys, I guess you guys can't see me because my computer is, I might have to like restart it or something, but can we recess to the next meeting if we don't have a Teams link, knowing that the next?
That's what she's trying to find out right now. We're going to find out and hopefully before we leave here, we'll either know, yes, we can, just by saying we're going to meet on Teams link when we all get it or not.
Okay. Because we've posted.
And then Member Johnson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I also wanted to know if Lawrence Cardacelli can be a resource? Lawrence Cardacelli, I know he's listening in, so.
You want to make him a resource now for February 7th? Do you want him to come back February 7th and then make him a resource then?
No objections, Chair.
Okay, no objections. We can make him a resource today for then. Okay. Um, who was next? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, having found out that we're going to be resourcing this or recessing this meeting, I figured I'd do a quick point information to clear the record on, uh, our previous, uh, Bill 103, it was in regards to, um, uh, uh, deed restrictions and a, a year ago, almost to the day, January 20th, 2023, that bill was vetoed by the previous administration and then we, this body did not override that veto. So this is not the first discussion we had on this. I just wanted to clear, uh, clarify that. Thank you, Chair.
So those who got into deed restriction in 103?
Uh, Bill 103 was on deed restrictions and it was, uh, vetoed by a previous administration.
Okay. Thank you for the record. Um, any other members have any questions regarding the recess date? Okay, I think we're good with the membership. Um, oh, I just want to see if our resources are able to come back. Can you guys come back? Thank you. I'm so sorry about the glitches we had today.
Yeah.
Virgil? Okay. We appreciate you coming here all the way from Honolulu, but thank you. Yes, Member, uh, Chair Lee.
Yes, are you going to close public testimony?
I did close public testimony. I already did.
All right.
Yeah.
So we have to, and this constitutes a discussion of the items?
I'm not sure.
Maybe just, just to be clear.
So this is what my, my discussion was going to be, uh, to, at the end of the, um, so, home buyers have different needs, ideas, thoughts, values of what home ownership could mean to them. And we should all work towards ensuring that we meet all of our people's needs. And that was my discussion.
Thank you, Chair.
For next meeting. Okay, any other questions? But I think we still have to wait for the response.
Um, I think that we're finalizing authorization to just switch the location to the council chamber, the official meeting site, but then we would still have a Teams meeting link available on the agenda as well.
And that would be sufficient?
Yes, that is our understanding at the moment, yes.
Okay, so everyone, we are going to use the chambers as the next location and the Teams link as to, um, the secondary location, um, virtually. Those of us who'll be attending, uh, virtually. Okay, anything else, staff?
Um, apologies, Chair. Um, it does, we are getting, um, un, updated information. Um, unfortunately, we are going to, we are going to ask you to defer both items and we would post a new agenda, so that would reopen public testimony. But, um, we do, because we are unclear if we can, we're going to operate in a more conservative way to ensure sunshine law compliance. So post a new, defer both items and post a new agenda. Apologies.
Okay. So if? Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez and then Chair Lee.
Oh, mahalo. Uh, two questions. One, I saw Mr. uh, Mr. Roversi, uh, about whether, um, resource people were going to be available on, on, uh, February 7th?
Yes.
And then I did see him hold in his chat. If you wanted to call on him and let him respond to your comment.
Okay, so, I, I, so Mr. Roversi is still online, going to have him hold on to that. So what you're telling me then is we can defer, we have to defer. Okay, because we don't have a Teams link address.
You got it, yeah.
So in that deferral, what it really means is that then we don't need to have this on the next February 7th meeting, we could do it later on.
Okay. Correct. Whenever you choose to schedule it again, yes.
Okay. I, I, I do have something on that February 7th agenda and I can't remember what it was, but, okay, so members, yes, Member, uh, Chair Lee.
Okay. Um, just for the record, I think we need to get some kind of statement from Court Counsel because, uh, we have really no choice with regard to, um, Teams because Blue Jeans is not going to be available at all at the, on the 31st.
Right.
As of the 31st. What was that again? If the chamber is the official location, is that not good enough?
It's not, according to Anna, she wanted to be more conservative to make sure that that would be, but it doesn't seem like it is. Okay. Number Sigimura?
So because we're all sitting here, including our resources and everybody, why don't we just get your recommendation, take the vote, get this done because of all these other complications?
I know, but then we don't have an opportunity to ask questions of the resources.
Oh.
That's what it is.
But they're sitting here.
I know, but then we don't give, they don't have enough time. We don't have enough time. And then we're missing two people. Or, yeah, we're missing Tom. So, okay, so I think, um, then when we do, um, going to defer, do I need to have a defer date?
No, Chair.
Okay. So Mr. Roversi, you're out there?
Uh, yes, Chair. Uh, I just put in the chat that I don't know that I'll be available for your February 7th meeting, but I'm more than happy to try to respond to any questions in writing or to speak directly with any members of council if they wanted to give you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Rollins Fernandez, did you have a question?
I did. Mahalo, Chair. Um, my question is, um, is there something preventing us from generating a tiny URL link for the meeting?
I don't know. Can we generate our own URL?
For this instance, the meeting link is created when the meeting is scheduled, is my understanding, so we wouldn't be able to create a tiny URL, the URL link ahead of it, um, for the chair to announce, unfortunately.
Are you speaking, um, Member Rollins Fernandez or are you talking to yourself?
Um, I was trying to understand what, um, Ms. uh, Ms. Anna is explaining. The, the, the URL, the, the link is created when the meeting is created? I don't understand that.
Yes, so essentially, um, apologies, and I may not have the best understanding because this is a new process for us, but I've, I'm being told that we do not have a tiny URL link to give the chair to announce this, at this time.
Okay, bye. Because I'm looking at the great committee's agenda from yesterday and it has the, the link, so like, um.
Yes, and we were, we were told that we can't use that link. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, by OIP?
No, by our IT.
Oh, from IT. Okay, so let's see what Court Counsel says. You still want to ask Court Counsel? Uh, Chair Lee?
No.
Okay, so, so now she's answering for me.
Thank you, Chair Lee.
I'll go with no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I still don't understand why we can't generate the link. I mean, they could recess and just generate the link.
Okay, I tell you what, we're going to get that answer questioned, um, that question answered, um, hopefully, uh, as soon as possible, maybe in our lifetime for sure, but definitely before our next meeting. So our next meeting is February 7th and I think I'd like to be able to defer this until that day if it's okay with everybody. February 7th, good? The what? Yes, I'm going to defer both items, Bill 12 and Bill 74, right? Okay. No objections? Oh, I, I apologize to everyone for all the glitches that happened. I'm going to blame it on the weather, so blame that. But also before we depart, I just want to say thank you, uh, members for your support of Queen Kaua Manu Shopping Center. They did go to planning yesterday and planning did given, uh, their total approval with no changes in conditions. So, yep, so they'll be coming back. So, thank you so very much. So, um, having no other further business for the committee, uh, the HLU Committee of January 24th, 2024 is now adjourned.